It is currently five o'clock. I now call to order the July twentieth, twenty twenty board meeting of the Belton Independent School District, Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. We are meeting this evening under authority of Texas Government Code Check Section five fifty-one point zero four five and with the authority of the Governor's Office via video conference to advance the public health goal of limiting face-to-face meetings to slow the spread of coronavirus COVID nineteen. I'd like to also take this opportunity to thank our administration and technology staff for making the technology possible for the board to meet in this manner. This meeting is being livestreamed on the board's YouTube channel and recorded. The recording will be made available to the public. Additionally, members of the public who seek to exercise their right under state law to address the board on an item on the agenda for tonight's meeting have the ability to do so in the manner listed on the notice for this meeting. Please join me for a moment of silence and meditation, after which we will state the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you all for joining us this evening. As I noted a moment ago, to comment on an item for the public comments section for today's agenda on the board meeting tonight, members of the public were instructed to submit their comments to be read into the record. Elizabeth, would you please read any comments that were received from the members of the public?
Madam President, no comments were submitted.
Thank you, Elizabeth. We are going to proceed with a governance workshop. There are going to be several items further down in our board meeting. We'll get those to take some, to have some discussion and take some action on. And I would just remind the board to please raise your hand so when you're ready to vote, whether in agreement or not, please raise your hand when called upon to do so. So we'll start with our governance workshop. We'll review and discuss key progress measures for the approved twenty twenty, twenty-one district goals. Dr. Smith.
Madam President, members of the board, it's great to see you all tonight. Thank you for another night with some time with our administrative team here in Belton ISD. I appreciate your dedication and your commitment, and I know there's a lot of time commitment in the last few weeks due to many things, and I appreciate your dedication and your leadership. Tonight, we're going to go into a few topics in this workshop, a portion of our meeting, and these are all related to governance and working relationships between superintendent, administrative team, and Board of Trustees. So please, throughout the whole time, feel free to ask questions, have dialogue with me. This is about where we get to talk about how we do business and how we meet together, and your input is greatly appreciated as we work through our planning. Next slide, please. So the purpose of this portion is really to engage you all in some dialogue around four major areas regarding governance. First is the idea of key progress measures and the process that we've used. Second is the structure of board meetings. Third is a board annual planning calendar, and fourth, the board operating procedures. Next slide. So as you all remember, as we dive into this idea of key progress measures, we, as you all adopted in June, our five goals for the school district for the upcoming school year. That says twenty twenty-one, and I apologize because that should, oh, no, that is correct. I don't even know what year it is right now. It's been one of those days. Those are the adopted goals for the upcoming school year. We took a look at those through workshops and discussion, and you all landed on those the last time. Next slide. We talked a little bit about the structure of these goals, and those goals that you adopted are the big, broad statements, and those were, those are what kind of guide our work. And you said as a board, here are the things that we want to achieve in our system. Key progress measures were what we were going to be bringing up to you here in July, and those are the ideas of really getting to the specifics in the SMART goal-type format of what are the most important measures under each goal that we can track over the year to say, we're making progress in these areas. So that was the idea behind the structure of this goal process. Next slide. As you remember, in this whole process, we had a few things. We did our, a goal report with the Board of Trustees. We did a Tazby work session with Kay, and we did a, another goal work session there on June the eighth, and then you all approved the goals on June fifteenth. What we'd like to update you all on is there's been some changes along the way. So not too long after you adopted those goals on June the fifteenth, DEA came out with additional guidance saying that the specific House Bill three and academic goals that you all are required as a board to adopt didn't have to be adopted now until January. So there was a window of time, and that's all based on this idea of wouldn't start testing data and the lack of, and what data are people going to use to make some of those really specific goals that you all were required to do through recent legislation. So what we decided to do is convene some work groups, start talking through what these goals really mean and what the key progress measures are. But what we would like to do is actually hold off until August the seventeenth to approve those key progress measures. Why? Because we need to dive in in more detail and make sure we're all in agreement on what those measures would be. And also, we have to figure out how the board is going to adopt those progress measures or those goals that you all are required to adopt with the legislation that you all went through the training on. So I just wanted to update you all. We'd said back in June that we would bring to you this month key progress measures for adoption, and we are asking that we can amend this timeline because that DEA guidance has said we have a little bit more wiggle room in all of this. The board doesn't need to adopt those goals quite yet, and we want to make sure we bring you a quality product and do that well. So I just wanted to give you a key progress measure update real quickly. We're still in the planning process. We have a little bit more time. There's not the urgency that there was a month ago in this, and we'd like to take that time if it's okay with the board. Or do you have any questions for us on the key progress measure process or the, the delay in bringing those to you?
Does board have any questions? Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Absolutely, and we will keep you updated, and hopefully we can bring those to you August seventeenth, but we will make sure you know along the way if there's any other changing landscapes that might change that trajectory for us. Next slide. The next part of our governance work session is where we really want to get into some dialogue with you all about how we want to structure board meetings for the upcoming school year. There are a few things that I know Dr. Battershell had worked with you all on in her interim role here in Belton ISD, and there are practices that you had in place in the past, so I wanted to run a couple of ideas by you all and have some dialogue around those ideas. First, let's talk about this hour timeframe, starting at five PM that you've all had at the beginning of your board meetings. It's my understanding that those have been designated kind of as a workshop-type discussion where the board would have more dialogue and have more discussion about a topic in depth. Benefits of the workshop model, it allows the trustees to get into a, one topic in more detail and provides a, the ability for us to go into some back and forth discussion, whereas in some of the other presentations, we're limited more by time. The regular board meeting, obviously, is your regular business meeting, and it's my understanding that those have typically been starting around six o'clock at night in the past, and then we had specially-called workshops along the way. And those specially-called workshops were things that, if there was a special meeting of the Board of Trustees, like in the selection of the superintendent, or whether it's a budget planning process, those are specially-called meetings. Next slide. So what I would like to propose to you all is that we formalize this just a bit more, and we do this for a couple of reasons here that I'll go into detail in a minute. What I'd like to propose is that we take a look at our board meetings and that we have a regular, regularly scheduled workshop or work session from five o'clock to six o'clock PM every board meeting. And what that allows us to do is have a separate agenda for that and dive into one or two topics in great detail. So here's what I envision in this one. Those board goals that you adopted last month, that we would take one of those goals every month and be able to dive deep and say, here's how we're working through this goal that you adopted as a Board of Trustees, and here's how we are actually moving that work forward in Belton ISD. So it would be dialogue for you saying, hey, this is the vision that we wanted or the goals that we wanted for the district, and you would get an in-depth update on how we're progressing on those. It also might allow us to have things like management oversight. Management oversight is a term that they use a lot of board trainings, and it's, it's different. It's a different focus than management itself. The board's role is a governing body. You have the ability to take a look, and you should take a look at the management oversight, making sure that we are managing the district well and moving the district forward accordingly. The management decisions and the day-to-day decisions on a regular basis are really the administrative work. So what a management oversight discussion might look like is if the board says in their planning, Matt, we would really like to get an in-depth discussion of special education in Belton ISD. We would be able to do an in-depth presentation on one topic, or it might be staffing, or it might be salary schedules or a budget workshop. We would be able to go in depth in one area during that workshop session over, through the course of that hour and provide the board with detailed information. It's kind of a deep dive into that topic. What we would do then is we would take a break, and we would then call to order the regular board meeting at six fifteen PM. And why I think this is important is that we would actually do this in order so the public knows exactly when the regular board meeting is going to start, and all of the recognitions and guests that we have at the beginning of those regular board meetings know exactly what time to show up and what their, what time they would be able to leave. So it'd allow us to formalize that timeframe for our board meetings so that we're making sure our community knows when they can come speak, making sure that our, our guests know when they can come and be recognized. One other thing that's a rationale for this is to make sure that we actually have some clarity about planning for our presentations. What I mean by that is, is that our administrative team would know if this topic, let's take goal one that you've all adopted. If this topic is in a workshop presentation, we need to be able to provide you more detail in our presentation than we would do in our regular board meeting agenda. So that's how it would help us as an administrative team as well. And then we'll get into these other discussion points in a couple of minutes here. But I wanted to open it up and have some dialogue from the board. Board, what are your, your thoughts on possibly moving to this type of a structure for board meetings starting in August?
It sounds pretty much like what we're doing, just a little bit more organized. My question is for the workshops, are we not going to have public comments posted for the workshop portion of that? Or is that strictly just for the regular board meeting piece? I thought we had to have public comments at all of those pieces.
Yeah, we actually do. So it would allow the public to be able to say, hey, my comments are really about this topic that you're going in depth on in this area, or my comments are really about the board meeting. So you would have two opportunities for public comment, but it would have to stick to whatever's on the agenda for that night.
Does anyone else have, you know, the board members have comments, questions? Jeff?
A quick question. So if we go to this model, and I certainly understand it, here in the last, I don't know, what, two, three months, we've had the board workshop meetings a week prior to our board meeting. So would that take care of that so we're not having those meetings and then turn it around and having the exact same meeting prior to? Is that, would it be a replacement? Understanding that if we have an emergency situation, that's a different. Just want to make sure that we're not doubling down on those meetings.
Yeah, the idea would be that we would be able to minimize the number of specially-called workshop-type meetings so that you all would have in-depth, know what this topic would be, it'd be presented on, and if it's for action later that, that meeting, you have in-depth information to take action on it, or if it's for action at another meeting, you've already had that discussion ahead of time. So the hope would be to avoid duplicate meetings in all of this.
Anyone else? I don't see it as an action item on the, for tonight's agenda. Is there a reason for that? Did you not want us to take any action on it, or we're just going to slide right into it?
So what we're going to do, we will slide right into it. What we'll do is we'll have our policy committee take a look because there's probably a little bit of an adjustment of the policy that is needed for local policy on this regarding our start time. Our policy committee will take a look at that at their meeting at the beginning of August, and we'll make sure that we have that for the second reading here in August. But you'll be able to go ahead and slide right into this format for your August meeting. So we have to take a couple of steps that I wanted to run by the policy committee first, and then we'll move forward from there.
Sounds good. Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Wonderful. Other discussion points that I wanted to allow the board to have some dialogue about is really about our board meetings moving forward, starting here in August. And obviously, we've been in a virtual world since our time. Our last face-to-face board meeting was March the seventeenth, and we have been in a virtual world since that time. I want to make sure that we have the ability to talk about that as a team of eight and what you all would like moving forward. And then also, the location, if we are face-to-face, the location of those workshop slash work sessions, it's my understanding that we've had those in a separate room before, and so I wanted to just get some clarification from the board on what you would desire for the location for the workshop portions. So I'll open it up to you all on thoughts about face-to-fates or virtual for the, the month of August.
Glad we're having this discussion. So is there the capability for us to be socially distanced on the podium there at the PFAC? As a board, can we sit comfortably across that stage? Or do you envision some other setup for us to have that meeting? And also, just like we're asking our parents to make that decision, virtual or in person, will that also be something that as a board, if there are those who cannot come on site, will have that capability to ensure that they can participate via electronic Zoom or something?
Yeah, so a couple of things, and I want to be really clear on this. I appreciate your patience in all of this as a Board of Trustees. This has been a decision as an administrative, as the superintendent, that I've made to keep these virtual up until now and to hold off on this discussion. And a couple of reasons why are the questions that you're bringing up. So my concern with the social distancing in the Pitt and Gergin Fine Arts Center was there are two things. One, your technology is set up on your dais, and it is, if you all remember from our March seventeenth meeting, it is very hard to distance at that dais. We would probably have to come up with additional tables set up and stuff so that we can distance appropriately as board members and a superintendent up on the stage. The other reason is, is that the limit on the public and coming in and being able to social distance appropriately, while I believe you haven't had three hundred-plus members in attendance at a board meeting in quite some time, it is hard to predict in the era of COVID about who would show up for what. And so one of the concerns that I also had was making sure that we had the ability to keep our public appropriately social-distanced and, and wearing masks appropriately as well. So that's why we haven't done it at this point. Can we, moving forward? Absolutely, I think we can. I think we just have to be kind of careful about the overall number of people that we would have in the Pitt and Gergin Fine Arts Center and actually allowing that distancing to happen.
I'd like to put my two cents in on this. I, I really appreciated your comments at the end of the Wednesday workshop when you clarified, you know, that some of us had requested going ahead and doing the, the personal meetings. And, you know, as of today, on July the twentieth, with the directives that we have in place, moving forward, if they haven't changed drastically, I'm in favor of us coming together. Like you said in the, your closing statements, if we're going to ask our teachers and our employees to come back and our kids, I think we need to be an example to the community in that way. If we get different directives where they shut the whole thing down in a couple of weeks, obviously, we need to keep going with what we're doing, but I'm, I'm in favor of that. And then as far as the workshops go, maybe the lounge, the former boardroom, there's a lot of room in there. And I've seen some pictures of you guys having some meetings in there. That might be a good place for that to take place.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ty. Mr. Norwood.
I'll back up what Todd just said and what Dr. Smith said in the last meeting. You know, if we're going to ask students, teachers to come back, I do think that those that are comfortable, those that don't have a reason, just comfortable, whatever your reason is, it doesn't matter. But if you're comfortable coming back, I do believe that we need to be back as much as we can. I think that those that have any reason at all that they don't feel comfortable being in those meetings, just like my clients, I have clients right now who don't want to have face-to-face meetings. I respect that. Those that are comfortable, I think we do need to move back. I think this is also an opportunity, Matt, and I don't want to throw, you know, throw this out there and, and cause a bunch of problems, but it may be an opportunity right now until we change some things. Our technology at the PFAC is great. I don't know that it is good enough to handle what we're looking at doing. And I've thought about this long and hard, and I think that, you know, whether it be a, what came to mind honestly was using LBHS, where we have the technology to have separate desks set up for the board members that can be there, socially distanced, but also have the monitor set up in a way that it's not a struggle for me to see what, if it's, if it's, if it's Ty who's not there, that I can clearly see what he is saying, and he can clearly see me. And as far as the people attending the meeting, question about that. If we have a half-in-person meeting, I'd just say half. Let's say we have three board members plus a superintendent, or four, who can show up, do we still have to open it to the public, or can we still go virtual with the public and have a place set up for them to make their comments, either, you know, somewhere else in the building? That way, I don't want, I don't want to put anybody in jeopardy. I don't want to fill up a room, but I think that we probably have the technology to do it better than we do at the PFAC right now until we can all come back together. That's just my two cents worth on that.
Jeff, I appreciate those ideas. And Janet, I'm sorry, I just want to say real quick, I just jotted a note down on this, and what we would do is we'd work with our legal counsel and get some guidance on that. But some of the things that you're bringing up is exactly what we were talking about, about trying to space out, do it in a way so you have the right technology, so you can see each other kind of face-to-face, but you're distant enough. And so we'll explore that LBHS option or other options, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Sorry, Janet.
No, that's fine. I have had quite a few comments, you know, even before anything happened, that people can't see us on the screen. They don't know who we are at all. So, you know, people had said, could you move the camera in? And then, I don't know, of course, then you spread us out, and then they really won't be able to see us. So that's just for your team to work out, and I know brilliant minds are there, and, and y'all can. But I'm, I'm totally open to coming back, and anybody, like Jeff said, that's comfortable. I think that's a, I think that's a great plan.
Thanks, Janet. Chris?
Hey, I've actually gotten a lot of feedback from folks who would like to see us continue broadcast the meetings going forward, right? No matter what format the meeting actually is, whether it's in-person or remote, just really valuing the ability to take a look at this, you know, in real time if they couldn't get out to see it. So, you know, I'd love to see us figure out some way to, to continue this, you know, and whatever that configuration is.
You know, I'll comment real quick on that, Chris. I think one of the things that, and it kind of, maybe it's just my hesitation on it, but our workshop on Wednesday night, we maxed out at about four hundred viewers at one time. That obviously is more than what you usually have in the PFAC for attendance at a board meeting. So I think to your point, the broadcasting of this has increased access to people, and I appreciate that immensely. The, the worry that I have is if we don't broadcast and do it face-to-face, that how many people will show up? Because four hundred people in the PFAC would not be appropriately social-distanced. So that's the kind of stuff that we would have to really work through if the board would like to be face-to-face, is how we pull both of those things off.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Dr. Montgomery, Emmanuel, do you all have any thoughts on those, on us returning?
I just have a quick question about masks. Are we going to have a mask policy?
So yes, if you, if anyone is inside our buildings in Belton ISD at this time, they're expected to wear masks if they are going to be within six feet of another person. And so, example, right now, I'm in the building, and I don't have a mask on as I'm working with you because there's no one else in my office. Down the hallway, I would put my mask on to make sure that nobody else, I don't come in contact with anybody within a six-foot radius of myself. And so that's what we are working through. We have notifications posted on our doors, and those would be the same type of expectations we would have for our board meetings as well. And that's a good, again, goes back to that idea of socially distancing with the Board of Trustees. If we were up on stage in the BFAC or wherever it might be, we have to give you enough space in between each other so you wouldn't have to wear a mask, and you would feel comfortable with that so that you could actually probably communicate appropriately, is what we would have to work through.
And that would be true for public as well, correct? Our, our audience would also be...
Yeah, barring, barring any kind of legal guidance, otherwise, that would be true for public as well.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Dr. Montgomery, Manuel.
That was going to be my question also. And that's the only question I had.
So if I am feeling this one out all right, it sounds like you all would like us to explore what kind of options we could have for our August meeting and see if we can both broadcast and do face-to-face and allow our board members to choose which they feel most comfortable with, and try and make sure that we continue to provide access to our community through this broadcasting process that we've done in the past. Does that sound correct to everybody?
That sounds correct, and I would imagine that board, we would probably need to let Connie know which one of those choices we're going to make so that they, the staff can make the appropriate arrangements when they talk about setting us up for that particular meeting. So...
If it's okay with the board, we will let you all know. I, I think we should be able to pull that off, and please understand if we can't, we are planning for an August nineteenth start of school as well. And if for some reason we can't, please know that we've exhausted all our options, and we will let you know that. But our goal would be to try and make sure you have the option to come face-to-face and virtual, and we'd be able to pull it off. But we will keep you updated along the way with our communication.
Sounds like a great plan. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Thank you, board, for your comments. I'm sorry, Manuel, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one more question. What about our committee meetings? Are we going to continue those virtual?
So the plan would also be for the month of July to continue those virtual and finish out our month. And then our meeting starting in August, we would do our best to see that you had the same option that you would have with our regular board meeting. That's a little bit of why I said we might, we might have to communicate with you if the policy committee meeting, if I'm thinking right, I think it's the first week in, in August. If the policy committee meeting, if we're not able to pull it off at that time, we might have to do all virtual, but we would have to let you know.
Okay, sounds like we've exhausted that topic. We're ready to move on.
I did want to ask real quickly about the location of work sessions or workshops that, at the beginning of our regular board meetings. Is there any preference other than, I heard Ty say the Learning Lounge? Any other preferences of board that you would like us to explore?
I don't have anything in particular. I would hope that with the workshop and still the public comments, who all is invited to the workshop? I guess is probably the better question. Are we expecting, you know, a lot of staff? Is it just the board? Who does that invitation go out to?
It would be the staff that is appropriate for the topic at hand. And again, it would only be one or two topics, and then the Board of Trustees. Obviously, it's open to the public. This is an open meeting. It's not a closed meeting, so the public would be able to be open. But as far as required, it would be our team of eight here and whatever administrative team members would need to come along.
Well, if there's a way to combine it in what, in one area as opposed to setting up several different areas, that's probably going to be better for the staff.
Great.
Yeah, I would agree.
We'll explore that. I appreciate your feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. We ready to move on to the annual planning calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next slide, please. So this next part is, you all should have received an outline of the annual planning calendar for board meetings for Belton ISD. What we're trying to do is create a, an updated version of this so that you all have the ability to weigh in on what should be on the agendas. I know, at least through my Senate Bill fifteen sixty-six training, part of the thing that I was taken through was to be able to say, as you're working with boards, try and think through what the most important items to have on your agendas would be. And we wanted to make sure that we had the ability for the board to weigh in on what those topics would be that we should be covering over the year. So what you were given is... So what you were given is an outline of board meetings throughout the year based on what you've all done in the past. So those items that you have by month are based on your past actions as a Board of Trustees. Um, by going through this process, what we hope to be able to do is allow us to thoughtfully prepare all of the materials that you would like ahead of time. And we would be able to make sure that we are, when we have you all face-to-face in a board meeting format, that we're actually delivering to you the things that you want us to be talking about. I will put one caveat in there is that we would also work with legal counsel to make sure whatever legal requirements you have as a Board of Trustees, that we make sure we fulfill those. But what I'm saying to you is you have the ability now to actually take a look at this calendar and to submit to us those ideas of what you would like to see on board agendas throughout the year. That way we can draft those agendas appropriately. Our next steps would be that you all would take a look at that board, uh, annual planet, planning calendar that you were given. And over the next month here, you would submit to us any ideas that you have for important topics to be presented to you. And that in the August meeting, we would dive into a discussion of that draft calendar for the upcoming year. So from September on, our board agendas would be based on what our board, uh, is sitting in front of us today would like, what our legal requirements are, and hopefully we'd be hitting those, those key points for you. Are there any questions from our board on the board annual planning calendar topic?
Or do you all have any questions, comments, concerns? Moving on.
Great. So I will have Connie reach out to you all and touch base with you on this, uh, topic moving forward. Next slide. The next one is the board operating procedures. And so as a Board of Trustees and our policy committee, I think you spent quite a bit of time with Dr. Batter Shell on the board operating procedures. And those board operating procedures look amazing from my point of view. Um, but we also want to make sure that you have an opportunity to say those types of things that you feel need to be adjusted in the operating procedures for our policy committee to consider moving forward. So this is an information gathering, um, opportunity for us. And I do have a few questions that I have based on the operating procedures, just to clarify so that we're all on the same page moving forward as well. So I'll start with that first question. Are there, from a board perspective, are there any operating procedures we need to discuss or have the policy committee review from your point of view at this time?
I don't have any. I don't see any takers.
Yeah, I mean, I think we just need to go through it and scrub to see if there's anything COVID-type related, right, that we would need to do. Uh, but I, I just, I mean, I know the hours we spent on it and, uh, I think overall, I think we were pretty happy with the content.
Great. So I'll, um, well, I'm sorry. I didn't let anybody else respond. I apologize on that. Anybody else that had feedback on that?
Matt, I had one. Yeah, looking at the, uh, the first topic that we talked about today about the way we're going to structure the board meetings, do we need to, um, adding thing in the board operating procedures as it relates to that?
You know, not that I can think through off the top of my head. I've, I've, uh, been diving into these operating procedures and trying to know them very well over the past few weeks here especially. And I don't believe that there's anything in there we would have to take a look at. I do believe that we would have to look at our local policy and make a slight adjustment on that. And then there are a couple of other things that I do think we, I want to clarify just regarding board meetings moving forward, but.
I, I don't remember if in the board operating procedure, if there's something in particular addressing the structure of a board meeting.
I don't believe that there was, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Alcozzer. Anyone else?
All right. Wonderful. If I can dive into a couple of questions, uh, these are just questions on, especially moving forward. And, uh, I think to Chris's point in the era of COVID, we want to make sure that we're providing you as a Board of Trustees the right information. And so I wanted to make sure that, uh, we worked through a couple of things here. Page five of the board operating procedures talked about the request for information. And there's just one clarification that I wanted to have on all of this. And that is when a board member requests information, do we want, uh, are we as an administrative team supposed to be making sure that all board members have that response? Or is that just an individual response for the Board of Trustees, uh, or if whatever trustee requests that information?
I believe it's probably good practice to share that information with the entire board. Uh, cause truly it may be something that maybe the rest of us did not know or understand to ask. And so I believe that it may be beneficial for all, uh, board members. What are you, what are your thoughts on that? Looking like shaking of heads, Jeff?
Agreed.
Okay.
So we'll do, we will work to make sure when we get board questions that we will, um, make sure the whole board is communicated with on the follow-up items. I appreciate that.
Thank you. I believe that's worked well in the past and probably just a good precedent to keep up.
Absolutely. The next topic I believe is on page six, and that was the idea of a board self-evaluation. And I know boards across the state of Texas evaluate their practices, uh, annually. And so I do know that, um, we're supposed to provide as an administrative team, um, sample board self-evaluations coming up. My question to you all for tonight is just when you would like that to happen for the upcoming year? I don't know what all was covered with Dr. Batter Shell or with Dr. Kinkanen, uh, prior to my arrival in February, but I also don't want to, uh, let anything lag if the board would like to dive into that, a self-evaluation process in the next couple of months. So, um, is there a specific time that y'all would like to dive into that?
Well, I, I just want to make a comment about that. Uh, as far as a separate board evaluation, um, to my knowledge, I've not ever done one of those. Uh, it's always been stated that an evaluation of the superintendent is also an evaluation of ourselves. So, uh, that punitive evaluation that we do, uh, at the end of the year or once a year for the superintendent is a direct reflection on us as a board. Uh, now that does not mean that we could not start a self-evaluation. I'll leave that up to, uh, the rest of my colleagues here to see what they would have, what their thoughts are. Yes, sir, Mr. Floor.
Um, I, I think we've considered the, um, workshop or team of a training that we've done, um, as the board evaluation, um, in the past. And so we did one, I think when we were getting ready to, uh, to bring Dr. Smith into the family, um, you know, and so with, uh, Dr. Batter Shell, right? So I think that's how we've done it in the past. Um, but certainly I'd be open to, you know, other instruments or mechanisms that, uh, that will satisfy this for us. Um, yeah.
I appreciate.
You're not calling this as a separate requirement. This is just something that, uh, you believe would, uh, better the board. Is that correct? Is that?
Uh, being honest, I was just taking a look at the, um, board operating procedures where it said on page six, the board shall conduct a self-eva- a self-evaluation annually. And so I thought I had it in my head that y'all had had some discussions about that and the team of eight training might make total sense, uh, for me. I didn't know, so I wanted to make sure I was providing you what you needed to have. That's why I was asking the question.
Sounds great. Mr. Taggart, did you have something that you wanted to say?
I think the school business is all about evaluation. And if there's another way for us to get better and stronger as a team, uh, than what we've done in the, in the three-plus years that I've been on, I'm, I'm for that definitely.
Thank you. Mr. Alcozzer, did you have something?
Yeah, um, well, I noticed that Holly's on, she's, she's on the night. Matt, do you know if that's something that we were supposed to do? Is there, is there a requirement for that?
I believe there is, and, um, I don't mind at all if Holly would like to jump in and clarify for us, but I believe there is and boards do that. I think they do that in various ways to Chris's point throughout the state of Texas. And welcome Holly. And we were going to introduce you a little bit later, but let's introduce you right now. This is Holly Wardell. And, um, this is our wonderful Board of Trustees.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Smith. It's very nice to be with you this evening. Um, I, I just wanted to say hello and tell you how much we enjoyed a meeting with your policy committee, uh, the other evening. And, uh, we, we certainly learned a lot about Belton ISD and, and your goal to continue your unique sense of community and family there in Belton ISD. And we're excited to be a part of that. We're hoping that you'll approve our, our contract later on in the agenda. But I've been listening in and love the way that you run your board meetings. Uh, this seems so pleasant and so cordial. Uh, it's, it's quite refreshing and, but, and I've been taking some notes on, um, getting some clarification on the AG suspension of the Open Meetings Act. Uh, I've got a question about that. I've already made some notes on that. But with respect to board evaluations, your team of eight can count as your board of evaluation, but it needs to have certain components. So it kind of just depends on how your team of a training was conducted.
Thank you for that.
So what we'll do is if, if you're all okay with it, I'll, I'll work with Holly and we'll get some clarification on what those parameters would need to include. And we can bring that back to the board for some discussion on what you'd like moving forward.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Yes, sir. Moving on.
We can pre- project again. Wonderful. Uh, the next one is just a comment on the superintendent evaluation. So we just recently adopted goals. And, um, hopefully that the superintendent evaluation will be aligned to those goals. Um, it's our intention to make sure that we have some type of formative feedback. So from the Board of Trustees, some touch base in probably October or so to say, here's how we're progressing. And if there's any feedback from the Board of Trustees for me at that time, that we'd be able to have a, a discussion about that. And then the, um, superintendent evaluation would continue to happen in January as noted in those board operating procedures. But that's kind of where we were planning on moving forward, if that's still okay with the Board of Trustees. The next one, I apologize, I had out of order a little bit here, but it goes down to, uh, communication and making sure that, uh, we are providing you, um, all of the type of information that you would like. When we are hopefully not faced with any kind of emergency procedures, but when we are faced with emergency procedures, uh, it's my understanding that we've had some agreements that the superintendent would reach out to the board and it would be the superintendent's determination on whether that's a phone call or a text message or an email, whatever mode of communication is most appropriate for the situation at hand. And I want to make sure that I'm understanding that well and that, uh, y'all are getting the information that you feel like you need to get right now. And if not, that we can adjust those practices from a administrative standpoint. So am I, am I understanding all of that correctly?
You are understanding that correctly. We're getting a lot of good information. In fact, I want to say you go the extra miles to ensure we get extra information and we get it in different avenues. So, uh, greatly appreciate you doing that. Go ahead, Janet.
Yeah. So, um, and, you know, just in regard to if we do have an extraneous question that's not necessarily related to any agenda item, I emailed you a couple of days ago about a topic because I can't talk to the board. And also because I told Deanna this the other day, we can't shoot the breeze anymore. Like we can't come before meetings or stay after meetings and talk to an administrator anymore. So it's, we're having this little, there's this little issue of like, we just can't get trivial things answered or little, little questions that, and so, you know, some are more serious. I think the question I sent you is a little bit more serious, but, um, as far as anything from trivial to serious, what is best for you? Do you want an email or do you want a text? What is best for you?
So honestly, either one works for me. I'm a, I, my administrative team will tell you I am not an email fan at all. But, um, uh, they, and they, I think they pick on me a little bit about that. But I, what I would say on that is feel free to contact the appropriate administrator. I think it says it in the, um, in the board operating procedures. And if you would just copy me so I know what kind of follow-up is needed, I would appreciate it. Um, and then if it's just touching base with me on something, text is always fine. Um, I can make sure that I'm responding to you via text or in the case of where you just need a, a five-minute phone call, I'm gladly respond that way. Um, but I would appreciate just being in the loop if there are, again, I, I think your example, Janet, was a really good one. If there's a kind of a, a bigger topic and it's not just shooting the breeze, if you just would copy me on that, so I know what's being communicated back to our board and we can make decisions what's appropriate to stick into whole board communication or not, I would greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Janet. Anyone else? Mr. Alcozzer.
Matt, uh, on the board operating procedures, we, we did spend quite a bit of time. Um, and I think, I think the, uh, procedures indicate that we're going to visit those once a year. But obviously those, those changes that we made here this year obviously came before you. So, um, if there's something that, that is an impediment to what you're doing, or if it's something that just doesn't work for you, I, I don't see any reason why we can't revisit those again and, and make some changes if you think those changes are necessary.
You know, I just have to say, and, and I'm going to echo what Holly said just a minute ago. I feel like I've kind of died and gone to heaven being in Belton ISD and working with this board. And so, uh, I don't have anything that I want to change. I just wanted to make sure that moving forward, we're hitting the right target for you all regard, particularly regarding communication and providing you the right information. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to clarify a couple of those things. But Manuel, right now, I don't see anything that I need clarification on or that I would like to change. I, I really appreciate the work that had gone before and, I think we're, we're on a good path.
All right.
The, um, next one that I had a question on was about the, uh, campus visits. One of the things that, uh, was noted in the board operating procedures is that the superintendent may arrange visits to campuses if the board so chooses, so that the board can attend, um, and not to exceed a quorum, I think was the language used in there. But, uh, is that something that, um, in, in those board operating procedures that you would like us to get started as we open the school year? I know COVID has a kind of this, this cloud over us on, on some of these things, but I also wanted to make sure that if we were, trying to, needing to plan campus visits for you all, that we were doing so in a timely manner as the school year starts to open. So is that, is that something that you all would request that the administration do? Or do I leave that one alone for the, the time being?
Well, you know, if it's something that you all, that's something that's going on, that you all want the board to see, be involved in experience, then certainly giving you all the opportunity to plan that for us so that we don't, uh, have a, you know, walking quorum, uh, that's probably the most efficient way to do that.
Wonderful.
Your thoughts, Ford? Janet?
Uh, yeah, I thi- I think that's, that would be probably wise, especially if it's kind of open to all of us to kind of sort us out and make sure we're doing it right. But, um, I also do want to suggest that we go, you know, return to when you first came and you were doing, you were inviting school board members to be with you as kids arrived in the morning. If we get that opportunity on the first week of school to join you again, I think we would probably all love to sign up for a time slot to come with you and, and visit a school and watch those kids come. So keep that in mind, please.
Janet, you're reading my mind because that was going to be my next question. So based on that, if, if y'all would appreciate that face-to-face interaction coming up, um, we will go ahead and, and make those schedules available to y'all. That work for everybody?
Thank you for bringing that up, Janet. That's a good one. Mr. Taggart?
I think when I first got on the board, uh, three-plus years ago, it was basically told to me that we were, uh, not allowed to just drop by a campus and say hi. It made people uncomfortable, things like that. Uh, then when Robin came in, she was like, oh heck no, go out there and shake people's hands and, and love on them, hug on them and tell them how much we appreciate them. So what, what is your stance on us? If, you know, like I say, at Southwest Elementary, you know, all those things have gone on out there. And I'm in the neighborhood and I wanted to drop by and just say hi to the folks up front. Or what, what's your thoughts on those kinds of things?
Yeah, I, I appreciate you all being willing to do that. The only thing that I would ask is that you arrange it with the principal. If it's an informal visit, that you talk to the principal about it, whether y'all know it or not, when you arrive on campus, there's probably a communication that goes out really quickly that says, I have a board member on campus. And so, uh, we need to make sure that our principals know and that that's well taken care of. But I, I do not need to know on those things. If it, uh, comes with a specific reason, so I'll use a, a CTE class, for example, if you want to go because you're inquiring about more information or something, I would appreciate being involved in that as well. Because that seems to me to be, um, a lack of communication from me or my team, and I need to help fix that. So if it's informal, celebrating them, shaking hands, all those types of things, please go do it. If it's something about you're really trying to get more information and it's something that I'm failing to do, I would appreciate you letting me know so I can help fix that and remedy it.
Yeah. So those, those emails that go out on campus are affectionately known as code ties, code tie, code tie.
You know, I gotta just say, when we were talking in the facilities committee a couple of weeks ago and, and Ty said that he had driven almost all the campuses over the weekend, I thought, I think he went out to more campuses than I did this weekend. And I thought I did a really good job. I think he went out to more campuses than I did this weekend and I thought I did a really good job. So code tie might be in effect. I don't know.
And I think we've had some really great intentional visits, right? I just kind of going back over the last couple we've done, right? We, we did a visit to Southwest Elementary to really sit down and talk to the administrative team and the academic team that was supporting that group. I think that was an awesome visit. We, we visited Bex from a preschool pre-K program, right? And got to see what was going on firsthand there, right? So, you know, I just, we've always done it with, with a lot of intentionality, right? Just making sure that we're there for a purpose and, and not distracting from the mission, right?
I would also point out, we've also had some wonderful opportunities to be on campus for the fun stuff. You know, the PTA events, the, you know, the carnivals and the book fairs and just some wonderful opportunities. And I look forward to being on campus for those things again, sitting down, reading with the kids. Love to read. So I can hardly wait for that to happen.
We're going to get there. I, I feel confident we're going to get there and I need everybody to have faith that we will. We're, we need those interactions, those big red heart awards and stuff like that. That's a big deal.
Red heart awards, yes.
I think the last question I have for you all on board operating procedures, if it's okay, if we can go back to our presentation real quickly. Oh, I was just going to make a comment on citizen requests and complaints. If one of the things that we're stressing with all our administrators is to try and make sure that if you get, as a board member, if you get any kind of questions that come in or complaints about what's happening, that everything would be redirected to the appropriate level to help solve the problem as informally as, as possible. So when you're talking with any kind of community members about any concerns that they have, if you would please make sure that they go back to that campus administrator and we make sure we address it that way. That'd be appreciated. And y'all have done.
I like when Ty's at HEB, right?
Yeah, most of the time I take it to the produce manager first and run it by.
Well, whatever you're doing, it's working. So maybe we shouldn't even bring that up. Sounds good. The last one I.
Mr. Flor.
Real quick, Matt, sorry. So, so this section of the board operating procedures is actually new for us. We just added this in as part of that, as, as part of the review. And I think we were seeing that too. We, we were wanting to make sure that it was clearer for folks, kind of what that escalation was, like what the most productive escalation approach really was. And we wanted to make sure that we, as a board, we're supporting, you know, the teams on campuses, right? And, and so we added that here. And then I think we've also got it on the board page, if I'm not mistaken.
I believe you do, yes.
Yeah. So that's, so that's, this is kind of all new. And so, yeah, I'm glad you feel like it's important because we felt like it was important enough to get it in there. So, yeah, that's good.
I think it's, I think it's really important. One of the things that always kind of amazed me even as a, I use my experience as a high school principal real quickly, is that sometimes you would have complaints escalated to the principal so fast that the principal can't provide relief or even address the issue. And they've skipped all of the appropriate levels in between. And I think that's a, that's the same type of mindset in this is that as a trustee or even as the superintendent, we have to trust our team and our team, if provided the opportunity, I believe can help solve the problems for our community. And so if we can make sure that it's addressed at the lowest level possible, I think that would be greatly appreciated. Anything else on that one?
I think that's good.
Wonderful. The last one I just.
You know, wait a minute. There's, there's one other little thing I want to say about that. You know, that, you know, we as a board, when we're out in the community and people see us, they immediately, if there's something good, bad, indifferent, they want to come and have that conversation. But what I would want the public to know is that individually, there's nothing we can do as far as your complaint is concerned. We certainly would love to hear you out, but the better thing to do is go ahead and go back to your campus, wherever that problem was, whatever happened, go start there. And then eventually if it needs to come to the board, then we as a board can sit in and listen to it as a board. But individually, we have no individual power as a board member. I just want to state that publicly.
Thank you.
That's all I got.
Last one I have is on board agenda cover menus or memos, not menus. I wanted to just make sure that you all provide us some feedback along the way on these. So one of the things I'm noting, I'm looking at it right now, our agenda packet for tonight was 258 pages. And as board members, you got that packet on Friday and you have a lot of information to go through. We're going to continue to kind of narrow down some of those cover memos in particular, so that it's really clear and specific. And you'll notice in our presentations tonight and in other meetings, we're even adding one slide in there and it's a purpose slide. So you as a board know very clearly, Ford, here's the purpose that we're bringing this item to you. And we're going to try and reiterate that in the board memo and make it really clear and concise for board information. If there are any, if you start to feel like you're not getting the appropriate information, if you would just please let us know. Goal in all of this is just to make sure that you have a manageable packet for you to go through and that you can actually digest some of that information. Cause 258 pages of just light reading material would be one thing, but this isn't light reading material most of the time. So we're going to keep working on narrowing that down. And if you have any feedback along the way, please tell us.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Ford, do you have any comments or questions about that? Moving on.
So I just wanted to, that, I think that concludes it. I wanted to thank the board for going through the board operating procedures with me on those questions real quickly. One of the things I believe in my heart is that I have the privilege of working with the best board of trustees in the state of Texas. And one of the things that I take really to heart in all of this is that it's a team approach. And I appreciate the clarification because it's my goal to provide you the right information so that you can do your job as trustees well. And so thank you for helping to clarify that information for me tonight. And if there's things that we need to improve on, please let us know along the way and we will gladly do so.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Next item on our agenda would be our facilities committee report. Mr. Taggart, I believe that's you or Dr. Smith. Would you?
I was trying to unmute myself. I hit the wrong button. So, so facilities, the last meeting that we met, we were able to take a tour of Lake Belton High School together, if I remember correctly. And it's magnificent. It's almost done. And we just hope we can get as many bodies into that school as possible when it's appropriate and safe. And it's amazing. When I got home the other day, I was driving around and I saw the, all the stuff at Belton High School and the orchestra. I saw the fencing was all down, the trailers were all gone. So I'm, I'm eagerly awaiting a trip inside there. Take a look at that. I know that David Bennett and his team have been working diligently at Southwest Elementary. I can't wait to get in there. Honestly, I just want to go pick the lock and get in and take a look and see what's going on there. I drive, I drive by Chisholm Trail every day on my way to work and I noticed that the two portables are out there and ready to go for whenever that's going to happen for us. The next meeting, I guess we'll have Wednesday. And I think we're just going to clean up our old capital improvements lists for the most part. Maybe delete a few items that have been on there for a long time and maybe don't have the focus of the current leadership team, maybe in the, in the board. I think our priorities shift every year as well also because need. One of the things I've been the most proud of is the three and a half million dollars that we spent on all the district wide improvements. The 2.1 or whatever it was that we've done on the playground equipment. We'll get updates on that later in the meeting. Those are things that are dear to my heart, spending the stakeholders' money on things that make our experiences for our kids and teachers is, is, it should be a priority for us and it is for facilities. I do understand though, now example, we're spending $2 million on computers that we weren't expecting a year ago. And so I think we're going to have to maybe take our foot off the pedal a little bit on facilities to try to ensure that we have some monies left over because we don't know what's coming around to be on tomorrow. So that hurts my feelings a little bit from a facility standpoint. That's my passion. But I think it's going to be the right approach. I think we'll discuss that a little bit. Maybe get Jennifer to give us a little bit more updated information on some of those things. But I think we had a really, really good year last year from a facility standpoint. I'm very, very proud of David and Bennett, David Bennett and those guys, Dr. Battershell for taking the lead. Deanna and Mike and everybody that was on board with that first wave. But I think it's time for us to maybe take a step back and kind of reevaluate where we are and maybe look to the unknown future that we have at this point. So that's all I've got for that.
Wise words. Dr. Smith, did you have anything to add?
No, I just appreciate the work of our facilities committee and our policy committee. We don't have a policy committee update this time, just simply because we did not meet formally as a, as a policy committee in the month of July. But facilities committee totally enjoyed that tour. And I agree with you, Ty, there's been great work done over the years. It's impressive watching it all come to fruition.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Janet, I know that you and I, and I can't remember, Chris, were you out there that day? We took the tour. That was, wow, I'm excited. Wonderful. So I believe that will conclude. It's about six o'clock. We'll conclude our workshop of governance. And if you all are ready, we'll move right on over to recognitions. Dr. Smith, I'll punt back to you.
Madam President, members of the board, and if you take a look at this, our timing is perfect tonight. We just completed that workshop at six o'clock PM. So good work, everybody. I'm going to turn things over to Elizabeth Cox and Elizabeth's going to introduce our recognition for the night for Helping Hands Ministry of Belton and Project Apple Tree.
This is always such a, such a great tradition for us to get to recognize. And it's a little bit different and only fitting this year. For two decades, Project Apple Tree has played an invaluable role in supporting a strong start to the new school year for students and families in our district. United behind the incredible vision of Jeanette Kelly, a former Belton ISD school board member and elementary school principal, who our community still, I feel like is, is feeling the impact of the loss. Based on her vision and months of planning by volunteers and faith-based organizations supported by the generosity of our community, it all culminated in that annual distribution day for providing school supplies, clothing and hygiene items, and special encouragement and support to our families in need. As a part of Helping Hands Ministry of Belton, Project Apple Tree is not only continuing its efforts to support a strong start to school, but it's looking to further expand that foundational vision that Mrs. Kelly had to include more year-round support in partnership with students, families and school districts in our area. And what I can point to specifically, because I was the person that got to, to make that call to Tasha, who we'll hear from later, Belton ISD students and families had a chance this spring and into the summer to experience the power in Hands and how they want to partner with us as they helped us support grab and go meal deliveries in this challenging pandemic response time. So special thanks to all those volunteers facilitated through Helping Hands for that. To share a little bit more with us tonight about Project Apple Tree's efforts this year, needless to say, they're going to look a little bit different. And specifically as it relates to engaging our community in their plans for distribution day, we have with us tonight, Tasha Roberts. Tasha, I saw her on the list. She's, there she is, the amazing Tasha Roberts. She's going to join our present.
Thank you. Well, thank you all so much for having me. I appreciate the chance to be here. And I just want to take a couple of minutes to give you guys a quick update about Project Apple Tree this year. As Elizabeth said, it looks quite a bit different. Lots of things have changed this year. In addition to COVID-19 and the loss of Jeanette, several of our key volunteers and leadership decided it was time to retire. They'd been working in Project Apple Tree, many of them since its inception 20 years ago. And so Project Apple Tree has come fully under the umbrella of Helping Hands Ministry. So this year, our goal is still the same. We want to make sure that families have a chance to get their children ready for success, not just on the first day of school, but beyond. And so what that will look like for the beginning of the school year is we are partnering with Perry's Office Plus and with a local nonprofit called First Blessing to give parents the chance to purchase school supplies and a new pair of shoes for their students who are getting ready to go back to school. We are planning for about 900 students to participate in Project Apple Tree this year. Because of our concerns about a community distribution, we will be distributing shoes at a shoe store where children will actually get to come and pick out their pair of shoes and try on shoes and those kinds of things. That will be in three different sites. With the goal of keeping our families and our volunteers as physically distant as possible, while still allowing families the chance to come in and have that shopping experience. And then school supplies will be distributed on a curbside basis. So families will come to Helping Hands at an appointed time and we will deliver their school supplies out to their car. One of the things that Elizabeth touched on is as our community continues to grow and our school district continues to grow so rapidly, one of our goals is to, through Project Apple Tree, to help families, not just at the beginning of the school year, but year round. And so as we approach the fall, we'll be looking at different ways that families may need support, whether that's through weekend backpack programs, different things like that. If we can assist with continued meal delivery for families who are attending virtually and those kinds of things. We are interested in making sure that kiddos have the support they need to be successful in school all year long. So does, if anyone has any questions about Project Apple Tree this year, I'd love to answer those. Hey, Janet.
Tasha, a long time no see.
I know, right?
How do, how do people sign up to donate?
The way we're asking our community to participate this year is by donating online. Instead of, you know, in the past, we've passed out apples and asked community members to go out and shop and those kinds of things. Because that's a little bit more difficult this year, we are partnering with the vendors directly and purchasing those items from Perry's and through First Blessing. So if you would be interested in sponsoring students, $20 sponsors a pair of shoes for a student. $67 sponsors shoes and the school supply set for an elementary student. And $48 provides shoes and the school supply package, including a backpack for a middle and high school student. So those donations, the easiest way to do it is online at our website, helpinghandsbelton.org. There's a link on the homepage to Project Apple Tree and that will take you directly where you need to go to sponsor a kiddo. Thanks. Any other questions?
Not a question, just a big oh, thank you for doing this. You know, it does take a village. And I'm telling you, in Belton, we come together and we take care of our kids. So thank you so much for just jumping in and being part of something so wonderful.
Thank you. And thank you all for hard, your, all your hard work this year. I can't imagine what it's like to be in your shoes right now. And as a member of the community, I just appreciate so much. As a parent of a kiddo who goes to Belton ISD, I can't tell you how much we appreciate all your hard work right now. And so thanks, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tasha.
Okay. Elizabeth, were you, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
No, ma'am. That concludes it. We'll be sure to share out on the district's pages also the information about both how families can get connected to Project Apple Tree this year if they are in need, or how you can help sponsor a kid student.
Okay, thank you. And I see Alan Tesra is, is connected. I want to make sure she understands. I really greatly appreciate her as well and all the work that she does. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Does any member of the board wish to have any item pulled for further discussion? Dr. Montgomery, did you have some?
So I don't, I don't need any theme pulled, but I would love more information about the emergency learning, that whole process possibly just put as a future goal.
Thank you, Dr. Montgomery. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed? That would be Mr. Taggart. Is there a second? Mr. Flor, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Okay, we are rocking and rolling on to being almost not finished. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. It's our July 2020 report. Dr. Smith?
Well, the good news for our Board of Trustees is that there isn't a whole lot to present to you on this because we presented three hours worth, as you all have reminded me on Wednesday night of last week. So tonight is going to be a very quick update on a few things regarding COVID-19 and our response. And I will ask us to go to the next slide. So our purpose of this is to make sure you have any additional information that we have received after our July 15th workshop that took place on Wednesday evening. Next slide. So as you all know, on July 15th, we went through some scenarios and you see there's some scenarios in color here. And we told you that we were taking a look really at the idea of opening face to face with enhanced safety precautions, while also providing where. while also providing, where it says five, an at-home learning environment for our students. Every school district in the state of Texas, as of last Wednesday, was required to offer a five-day-a-week face-to-face option and a virtual option. So Wednesday night, that is what we spent our time over those three hours talking to you a little bit about. Next slide. So as you all know, we had updated information as well. And so that is the nature of COVID-19 as things change rapidly. The information we presented to you on the 15th was based off of TEA guidance from July the 7th. And TEA guidance again changed on Friday, July the 17th. That says June the 17th, and I apologize on that one. So it was July the 17th. The TEA Commissioner call with superintendents on Friday, July 17th, provided school districts more flexibility for enhanced safety measures. And specifically what I mean about that is that I told you on Wednesday, we didn't have a whole lot of option to really pursue a hybrid-type experience for kids. Hybrid meaning some kids going face-to-face and some kids going virtual all at the same time so that you could space out the number of students that you have at one given time in your school or in your classroom. As of last Wednesday, I think the question came up, hey, can we provide that or not? And I think my response was, well, the commissioner said, yes, you can, but kind of good luck pulling that off. But the commissioner and TEA changed their guidance. And so districts do have more flexibility regarding a hybrid approach moving forward. They also clarified the phase-in that has been talked about in a lot of news articles around the state. And they are now offering districts four weeks to actually phase in learning at a school or a school district and an additional four weeks if the Board of Trustees takes formal action on it. So what that might mean is that if we wanted to open with a very limited capacity number of students face-to-face on August the 19th, we now have the ability to do so. And then possibly the next week, add some more students and possibly the next week, add some more students. What I want to be clear about is that we would still be, if we're opening school on August 19th, we would still be providing learning in a virtual environment during that time as well. But what that allowed the districts to do is have kind of a phased-in approach to gradually bring people back and build up so you could actually test out your safety procedures in a school district. The other updated information I was hoping for, but we did not get today, was from UIL. UIL was supposed to make an announcement regarding fall sports today and at about four o'clock this afternoon, might have been a little bit earlier, they said that they will not be making an announcement today and we would have to wait on that guidance. So those are the things that we were waiting on or that we were expecting between our workshop on Wednesday and tonight. Next slide, please. So where we are right now in all of this is we told you as of July the 16th, we would send out stakeholder surveys. We have those sent out and as of 4:17 PM today, we have 6,512 individual surveys that were completed by families in Belton ISD. And that is since Thursday evening when we sent that notification out. Two quick topics face-to-face that I know is on everybody's mind, excuse me, that I know is on everybody's mind is what are families saying, face-to-face or virtual? And right now, we have about 60% of our families that are saying face-to-face and about 40% of our families that are saying virtual. So, and that is with about half of our, our, our students. I should rephrase that. Half of the responses in our school district that we would anticipate, we would anticipate about 12,200 responses if we were to have every student have a survey filled out. And again, right now, we have 6,512. So it's about half of them. So I share that information with you, saying we're gathering all of that information. And we're going to be hosting some community events coming up this week. I'm hopeful that board members are receiving information on attending and listening into those events as well. What those will look like is asking our community some information from them in a thought exchange and a live thought exchange where we can have some dialogue. Because our goal is to be able to say, we're putting together our final plan coming up. What are the final things that we need to really consider as an administrative team in all of this? On July the 23rd, we will have a team back here at the, at the central office, working through all of that feedback and any plans. And then we anticipate releasing our comprehensive plan on July the 24th. I will say this, that when it says comprehensive plan details, we also know that with the shifting sands that we face on a regular basis, that will have to be updated along the way. And I want to be really clear with our board and also with our public. And while we are going to put our best foot forward on July the 24th, we know that based on past history, things will change some based on the guidance that we receive. We will keep our community updated along the way. Our public will have the opportunity then, beginning on July 27th through August the 5th, to actually have an at-home learning registration window. So what that means is a parent, then, at that point, after our finalized plan, our comprehensive plan is released, the parent would make a decision on whether or not the student is going to go face-to-face or virtual. And that's that final decision. Why we have to have that timeframe is that actually school districts have to, we couldn't say that we were asking for that information a month ago. We actually had to make sure that TEA gave us a guidance that it had to be opened up until two weeks before the start of school, two weeks before the start of school would be August the 5th. On our previous slide in the workshop, it said August the 4th, but we're amending that to say August the 5th on this so that that two-week date is actually right on the mark. And then finally, on August 3rd through 18th, we will continue to release components of our plan and to make sure our community is well communicated with. So those are the upcoming events that you all will be seeing and hearing about as we roll forward to the August 19th start date. Next slide.
Are we going to share this timeline with the public? I know that it's all tentative and everything's very fluid, but this kind of gives everyone a general idea of what we're thinking. Is this something that you all have been thinking about sharing with the public beforehand? Just the timeline?
Absolutely. We'd be glad to do so.
Thank you.
Next slide. So we have a couple of administrative tasks this week is, I said before, we were really tasked on last Wednesday to focus on Area 3 and 5. We said we were, we believed that we didn't have the opportunity to actually get into the discussion about hybrid schedules. And so this week, we actually have to use that community feedback and staff feedback that we gather. We have to take a look at our local health data, any kind of updated information from TEA. And we're going to have to make a final determination of where we fall in this face-to-face option for our families. So again, we'll have to decide whether or not we are going to do any kind of a hybrid phased-in type schedule or if we are going to move forward with exactly what we presented to you all last week, which would be that face-to-face, five days a week for everybody. That is a daunting task right there. And I will use an example for you all. I received two emails on Friday from staff members and they were on two very opposite sides of the issue on this. And so why I say it's a daunting task is, you all know, when you have 60% of your, your community say they want to go face-to-face and 40% say we're going virtual, we just have very split opinions on a lot of things on this. And I respect that in our community. So it's our job to figure out the best and safest way to try and get our kids face-to-face and then keep our staff safe. And we'll be working through all of that this week and communicating out with our community, again, hopefully on the 24th. Board, what you can expect from me is some detailed conversation over the next few days, probably giving you phone calls to update you on where we are in that planning process.
And I should also think it should be noted that you use the word safe often. That's important to us. We're going to ensure that the kiddos are going to be quite safe. If they're going to be in person, you all are looking at all the possible measures and taking every precaution to ensure that they're going to be safe.
You know, I think that, I appreciate you bringing that up. And it's hard because I think of the level of detail and complexity of this, it's hard to communicate exactly all of the details that some people might wonder. But if I look at this diagram that you have in front of you right here, if you take a look on the left-hand side, that all face-to-face scenario, all the way over to at-home learning, in my mind, what this really is, is the farther you go to the right, the more socially distanced and quote "safe" you might be at that point. And so we're trying to figure out what this could look like. Could we actually pull off a hybrid-type schedule that would meet the academic needs and meet the needs of our community and keep kids extremely safe? Or can we actually do that in what we presented on, on Wednesday night as well? And so it's detailed and it's tricky and it's sticky. It's a little messy. And we're working really hard. And I need our, our staff, our students and our community to know that while it's complex, we haven't forgot that people are, people's faces are behind all of this and we're going to do our best for our kids.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
Next slide, please.
Hold on, I believe Mr. Taggart had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ty.
No? Okay.
So I just wanted to update you all regarding our March 17th resolution. I've tried to bring this to you every month and just make sure you know what we've, what actions we've taken in as an administrative team pursuant to the resolution that you passed on March the 17th. At this time, we don't have any staffing or human resources updates according to that. And then finally, the financial updates. To date, right now, we estimate about $483,000 have been spent on COVID-related items. About $320,000 of that were related to payroll, as I think we've mentioned in the past. And then finally, supplies and services, we were about 162,000. What I also need our board to know is that on all of these things, whatever we're eligible for reimbursement for or any kind of funding for, we are exhausting those opportunities as a school district. So our community knows that as well.
Thank you, Dr. Smith.
And that concludes the superintendent's report for the month of July.
I see Mr. Taggart's hand.
I wasn't able to be here last Wednesday, but I did catch up on the three hours and nine minutes that you guys spent on Wednesday, listened to every word. I just want to throw one, a couple of comments in there. I just wanted to say how taken back I was by the team in each presentation, each segment of the presentation. Starting off with our, with our new Dr. Golden and moving through Deanna and, and Mike and Todd and everybody. I just got a feeling of pride and comfort in the team and their abilities to pull this off. However, that looks a month from now, we know things are moving. And I can't tell you how many positive comments I've had come through text, phone call, email, and the level of comfort that people are having with you, Dr. Smith, and your compassion and your kindness. And they trust you that these public forums and these surveys are being used. They're not just for, we're going to make you feel like we're paying attention, but we're really not. I think there's a comfort level that you've given to the staff, our teachers. I got to travel this last week with my wife, who's a teacher in Belton, and a, my youngest daughter, who's a sophomore, they're both eagerly awaiting, hoping that they do get to come back. They're part of that 60% that wants to come back, if it is possible. But we also have to consider the other things. And I think y'all are doing a marvelous job at considering all facets of this. And I just want to say how proud I am of you guys. I wasn't able to say that on Wednesday. So thank y'all so much.
Well said, Mr. Taggart. Thank you. Mr. Dr. Smith, did you have a comment?
I just want, thank you. And I appreciate the board's support through all of this. Again, we're doing our best and it's a, it is a tricky topic and we will continue to put our best foot forward and listen to our community and try and meet the needs of our community because that's what makes us, makes us a strong one. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is the Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation Annual Report. We'll be listening to that. We'll receive that report and we'll also discuss the MOU.
Madam President, members of the board, I'm excited to have Alan here tonight to update you on the wonderful things that Beef is doing for the students, staff, community in Belton ISD. They are an outstanding partner. And I've just want to thank, very publicly thank Alan for her leadership in all of this. And I'll turn it over to her.
Indeed. Welcome, Alan. We're glad you're here. I think you're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Can hear you now. Yes, ma'am.
Right now. Thank you for inviting me tonight to share information on our annual report to your board. Our first slide, as you can see, some of you may have noticed a big change. Last year, I told you we were doing strategic planning. And one thing that came out of that is we have a new logo and I hope you really like our logo. It's supposed to represent all the students from the early years all the way through graduation. Next.
It's beautiful logo. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like Groundhog Day, I'm always telling you the same things, but not, some of this stuff has not changed. We were founded in 1992. Our mission continues to support Belton ISD student achievement and success by partnering with the community. We have several programs, teacher grants, scholarships and dual credits. We have 32 board members. This is probably the fullest board we've had in many years who work really tirelessly. I just cannot tell you, especially now, they have full-time jobs, kids under their feet, and we're still pulling off everything that needs to be done for Beef. So and we have over, I actually just got the financials, and we actually have over 1,400,000 in assets. And most of that's invested funds from our donors. Next slide. If you have any questions, just stop me. This is a list of our Board of Directors. I listed our executive board at the top and then the rest are in alphabetical order. As you can see, we have just really, really a very strong board that's doing a great job. So very excited for them. Next. This is a list of our events. I'm going to go into more details in just a minute. I'm going to show you a couple pictures from some of the events. So if you would go to the next line. And I don't know how I picked the order. This is was red carpet. We had a really fun red carpet. Last year was called Casino Night. People just loved it. We overdid ourselves in what we brought in for money. We usually have a goal of about 80,000 of income and we reached almost 140,000 with a live appeal. So it's allowing us to do some really good things for BISD. This year is going to be very tricky. We are thinking about not doing, we might call it red carpet, but it's probably going to look like a concert if we're able to do anything. Tentatively looking at September 19th and doing it at Shox. They've been doing concerts. But as you all know, every day is, we just don't know. So we'll keep you informed on that. Next slide. So you all probably joined us for our virtual scholarship awards. I thank BISD, especially the communications app, but all of them. And Matt just really, really helped us pull it off. And we just really heard really good things. We were done in like 10 minutes with New Tech and 20 minutes with BHS. I'm not so sure we shouldn't do that every year, but. Next slide. Go back one. Okay. If you're not aware, we gave out 134 scholarships. One thing we're doing, like in our strategic planning, we actually think $1,000, although it's great. It's, you know, college is just very, very expensive. So we actually doubled the Beef scholarships to 2,000 this year. And so that's why we have a little less scholarships going out. We had 134 total with our donors and the Beef. But the money still exceeded what we gave out last year, which this year we were over 246,000. And as you can see, it's divided pretty, but based on the school sizes and that, it, it shakes out pretty good with 193,000 to Belton High School for 104 scholarships. And then New Tech had over 52,000 for 30 scholarships. Next slide. We, we were able to get this little ceremony in. It was part of the award ceremony that Belton ISD does, but we were able to get our superintendent scholars in. The actual awards, there was only four at the end of the day because one of the students, Sydney Hunt, got a full ride to hanging in and could not accept any other scholarships. Next slide. We also, yeah, last fall in December, when we did teacher grants, gave out paraprofessionals. Robin had a really exciting, just to give you a really quick story. We brought him all, instead of, we have so many teacher grants and paraprofessionals, we brought the paraprofessionals in and surprised him. And so Robin brought him into a room and somebody was late, so she ended up talking to them for like 30 minutes. And she learned a whole lot. Like, so now there's like focus or there was focus groups. But we totally surprised our paraprofessionals. And part of our strategic planning is trying to get that on more of an academic year. So we actually did scholarships again. Matt, Ellen, and, and myself, we rung the bells via Zoom about a week or a couple of weeks ago, right? I was out of town. I could only find a horn. So I started a new tradition. But, so we again gave out scholarships. But, so we again gave out scholarships, and we're, we're really hoping to find a donor to match some of this and be able to give out some more money. A lot of these, our real mission is to get these, them to get teaching certificates so they can be hired by Belton ISD.
If I may jump in real quickly, I want to thank Alan and Ellen for helping to pull that off. I will tell you, our paraprofessionals on the Zoom call that day, they thought they were meeting with me, and I, I gotta tell you that they, I think they all had this look on their face like, what in the world does this guy want right now from me? And then when you got to see their face, when they realized that they had a scholarship from Beef, it was really important, a really special moment for me as a superintendent. So I just wanted to say thank you to Alan and Ellen for helping us pull that off. And even in a virtual world, I thought it was pretty special.
It was good, thank you. Next. We actually were able to do our golf tournament. We delayed it from March to June, but it, everything seems to have turned. I have had no reports at any, it was really, really good. A little hotter than normal, but we had a great day. Next. The, the next, oh, tennis. Tennis was super. We had 48 players, and again, it was a lot hotter than we were used to, but it just seems to, they all showed up even with COVID. And if you're, if you're not aware of this little statistic, I'll let you know because I always brag about tennis. It's one of the top things you can do during COVID for the safest, so just letting you know. Next slide. Prize Patrol, this was last December. It was, this is when we could go out into the schools. And I, I just love these pictures. Janet will tell you, she was with us, all of you were with us, but she's on the Beef board. I love these students, and they're just so excited. And these teachers, can you go to the next page because I have a few more pictures next? These teachers down at the bottom, I mean, sometimes it was just, it's just so exciting how excited they are. And so we actually gave out a lot of money, over 75,000, around 75,000, but 15,000 was raised through the red carpet and some private donors. We were able to give three schools literacy grants of $5,000 to bring classrooms into the classes. So I, I hope the kids can come back and see those books. Next. So what accomplishments did we have last year? We actually received, you all are not aware, we started a program with dual credit. Beef originally just put $10,000 into it and wanted to help economically disadvantaged students be able to take dual credit. We wrote a grant to Carpenter, and they actually gave us 40,000. We raised another 20,000 during that live event. So we have a very healthy fund. It won't last forever. We spend about 10,000, uh, seven to 10,000 per semester. But we hope it will last for about three or four years and continue to grow. As I said, we did the $15,000 literacy, literacy grants to the three schools, Tism Trail, Miller Heights, and Southwest. That red carpet, they raised the 50,000. And you may or may not know, we've also done a new website, but that's work in progress. I'm going to ask my board if they'll come up with some funding so we can embed everything into it and make it a little bit higher level, just like the Belton ISD one. Next, I think I'm done, but. Yeah, thank you. Anyway, I thank all of you. I just excited you always at our events, you definitely support us, and I'm just really, really thank you. And I know you have a long, busy night. I also thank you for everything you do, and I know it's tough. And I just thank Jesus every day, my children are not still in school. I mean, they are in, one's in college, hybrid, works well. He's at home this weekend and doing it, so. Anyway, any questions, thoughts?
Board have any questions, comments?
Thank you, Alan, y'all are superstars.
We have a good board, and we have good support. And Matt, like he just literally, Robin and Matt, the transition is, has been shockingly just amazing. So thank you, Matt, for all you do for us.
Thank you. It's easy to have a, a smooth transition with such great partners and donors and Beef. And they're, they're focused on doing great things for our kids and our staff, and we appreciate that immensely. Madam President, we are bringing to you tonight the MOU. And I just want to make sure that you all know, there are just a couple of minor changes reflected in the MOU for Beef, and those are just to reflect current practice in how we're doing things in Belton ISD. Nothing major for the MOU approval moving forward.
Thank you. Does board have any comments or questions before we take any action? Then the recommendation, the administrative recommendation for us tonight is to receive annual report and approve the amended MOU as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Dr. Montgomery, second by Mr. Alcozer, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you, Alan, for all the work that you all do and caring for our kiddos and our community because we are one big community, one big red community. Appreciate that very much.
Thank you, Alan.
Okay, so we are going to go back into governance a little bit and talk about the RFQ number 2005-600-234 for external legal counsel services and authorizing the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract. Dr. Smith.
Madam President, members of the board, I'm going to let Manuel jump in here if you would like to provide any other details. But we've gone through a, a great process, thanks to our procurement team here in Belton ISD, so that we were able to secure legal services, legal counsel services moving forward. Special thanks to board members who helped participate in that process. And I'll turn it over to Manuel if you'd like to make any comments on that.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Just have a couple of comments. We, we had the privilege of interviewing three, three law firms, obviously well-qualified, superstars in their own right in their field, provide lots of different services to school districts all over the state of Texas. Difficult choice for us. They were all very well-qualified. I mean, it's, it's, it's like you were interviewing the, you know, the top of the top, cream of the crop kind of folks. At the end of the day, though, we thought that Echobomb Wardell, Holly was on just a moment ago, earlier this evening. We thought they were the best fit for our district based upon working with them on some recent items. Not that the others weren't qualified, and I think that if you look in the packet, Dr. Smith wants to have as a backup, Walsh Gallegos. And I'm assuming, Matt, that they've agreed to do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But just in terms of, in terms of fitting with our, with our personalities, with our administration, we thought that, that Echobomb Wardell would probably be the best fit for us. Not that the others weren't qualified, because they were. These are top-notch law firms, you can't go wrong with any of them, but we just thought from a personality perspective and the fact that we've done some work with them recently and was very pleased with their work, we thought we should go with them.
Thank you, Mr. Alcozer. So Madam President, we're bringing to you tonight the recommendation to move forward with Echobomb Wardell and also as a backup, a second opinion law firm if we need Walsh Gallegos. And we'll leave it for you for appropriate action.
Awesome. Does the board have any other comments or questions before we take action? Then the administrative recommendation before us, and I want to read it. It says authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract with Echobomb Wardell, Hanson Pal, Amunos, PC to provide primary legal services for Belton ISD and authorize the superintendent to execute a retainer with Walsh Gallegos, Trevino Russo, and Kyle PC for secondary legal services. At this time, is there a motion to approve? Janet, and a second by Mr. Flor, all in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you so much.
I want to thank our board and our, again, for the participation, Rosie, Chris, and Manuel. And also Holly, is there anything else that you would like to say real quickly? I know you've already introduced yourself to the board earlier, but anything real quick?
Thank you. We are thrilled to be partnering with Belton ISD. You're obviously doing some very exciting things there, you know, based on your, your fast growth and the fact that so many people are moving to Belton. And, and I kind of chuckled to myself when Dr. Smith said earlier that he feels like he died and gone to heaven because that was exactly what I was thinking when I started listening to your deliberations this evening. So I'm absolutely thrilled to be working with you, just right down the road, not an hour away. So if you did anything, we are here for you, and call us if you need us.
We certainly look forward to working with you, Holly.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will take up our next item on the agenda, which talks about naming a delegate and an alternate to the 2020 Tasby Delegate Assembly. Does the board, does any board member have any desire to be on, to be a delegate or an alternate? We'll take up the delegate piece first. Mr. Norwood, I see you smiling, I, I feel like there's a strong opinion there. Do y'all have any desire to participate in the Tasby Convention in any way? Because if you're not participating, then there's really no sense to naming a delegate and an alternate if we're not going to even participate. Mr. Flor.
Just a quick question, right? So if you could cover the time of the commitment, right? So it wasn't clear to me when, when the assembly actually was occurring?
So that happens, I believe it, at this point, it's scheduled in October. I don't have that particular date in front of me.
So it's a Tassitasby, I think, then?
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay.
There's a piece in there where you would veer off from the regular group and go and participate in a meeting in a voting session, if you will, to elect new members for the incoming, upcoming year for their delegates. You would be a delegate to voting. So that's kind of, I know that you had, was on the committee last time, but it just didn't work out. That none of us went. So I don't know that they'll have an in-person convention, but if they are and we're interested, now is that time to go ahead and select those folks who would be participating. Chris, do you have any interest in being a?
I mean, I certainly would. I know that I can't go to Tassitasby this year. It kills me, I would love to be there in person. You know, if there's a way to do it, you know, if they're going to do it virtually or whatever, I mean, I certainly wouldn't mind, but I know I can't physically be there in person.
Okay.
Madam President, just clarification, I don't, I don't believe we have a virtual plan yet from them. So just so you know on that one.
It almost sounds to me like at this point that we will probably sit this year out and reevaluate next year. Does that sound like a fair statement? See a bunch of heads shaking. It says that we're going to take action. We can go ahead and present a motion to not participate this particular year. We can do it that way. So if there's a motion for us not to participate, can I have someone make that motion?
I'll make the motion that we don't participate this year.
Is there a second? Janet? All in favor? Please raise your hand. We will opt out this year. Thank you. Okay. Moving to what, we're going to take appropriate action on a resolution regarding response to pandemic emergency by waiving student fees and deposit.
Madam President, members of the board, you know Jennifer Landwell, and I'm excited that Jennifer's bringing this topic to you tonight because she's done a lot of work on this, and I think it is a real positive for our community throughout this process. So Jennifer, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Good evening, Madam President, board members. Dr. Smith, I want to start by thanking our high school principals as well as Mike Morgan for working on this topic and getting the necessary information and also bringing it up. But it is my pleasure to speak with you and ask for your approval of this resolution to authorize administration to waive student fees. Our Board Policy FP says that we can only waive fees if there isn't an ability to pay. However, at this time, we know that during the pandemic, it has hit some families hard. A lot of our families have been adversely affected by this, this pandemic, and it's created a financial hardship. So we are proposing that we waive all the fees and fines that are outstanding for all grade levels at the end of the 2019, 2020 school year. And we are also proposing that we waive the technology insurance fee that we usually ask for from our families for the technology devices for the 2020, 21 school year. The fees and fines are include, but are not limited to fines that occurred for library, late library books, also fees associated with issuing ID cards, fees associated with lost textbooks or technology repairs. Those are just a few of the things, but it encompasses a lot more. And we want our families and our students to start out on a clean slate for next year and to not be concerned about those outstanding debts that are, that, that they have with the district. And by doing this, we are allowing our parents and our guardians, as well as our community, to retain over $280,000 that can be repurposed and spent on some other things that for our families' needs.
I think this is going to really help out.
I'm sorry, Janet.
It's going to help out the Taggart family quite a lot.
My son was in sixth grade all those years ago that we didn't have a fire, and how about that? This is awesome.
Well, what a great way to help our community and help our families. You know, there's so many things to worry about. And if I have to worry about, you know, coming up with 20 bucks to pay for an insurance fee for an iPad, this is just not a good time to worry about the small things. And if we can help out with the small things, it'll make it easier for us to deal with the larger things. So way to go, BISD. This is exciting. So board, do you all have any comments, any other comments or questions? So what the recommendation before us tonight is to approve the resolution to authorize administration to waive student fees and deposit. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Taggart, is there a second? Mr. Norwood, all in favor, please raise your hand. That's an easy one. Mr. Taggart, you're not raising your hand, so I didn't get your vote. I'm sorry, everybody, thank you. We just want to be, make sure we get that right. So it's because we want to do our part to help out. Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Jennifer, appreciate you. And so we'll just move on over to the budget.
Jennifer is going to continue with our budget development process with you and give you a very quick overview of where we are and what's coming next.
Okay, so thank you once again for allowing me to stand before you. Next slide, please. So it's my purpose tonight to just provide you an update on the development of the budget for the 2020, 21 fiscal year. Next slide. In developing the 2020, 21 budget, there are some changes that we are definitely keeping our eye on. There's a lot going on, but in the midst of all of those changes and challenges, there are a few things that we are able to be certain of. One is that our MNO tax rate is going to be decreased. It's going to be further compressed due to House Bill 3. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that later, but that is something that's going to happen for the 2020, 2021 budget. Also, after several years in the district, and we have a, in looking at the history, we do have a strong fund balance. We have over five months of operating expenses in our fund balance, and that at this time is quite impressive, and it shows how financially sound the district is at this time. And then three, that, the last thing is that change is certain. I think you've probably heard me say change a thousand times, if not a million. And that is one thing that we are definitely going to continue to experience is change. So with that change, the budget is going to evolve throughout the year. And the budget estimate that you will receive for adoption is just that. It's an estimate, we will work, we will refine it, and we will, we'll adapt the budget to meet our needs throughout the year. Next slide. I wanted to remind you that Belton ISD saw a, a decrease in the tax rate last year, and it was definitely a significant decrease. Our taxpayers saw about a 13.79 cent decrease. Our taxpayers saw about a 13.79 cent decrease, which is about an 8.6% lower tax rate. And we are going to dive a little bit deeper into each individual component of the tax rate. Next slide. On the MNO side, or we see that the decrease was 10.7 cents last year. And again, that was quite an impressive decrease. That was the first year of House Bill 3's compression. And I just briefly mentioned previously that we're, the tax rate is going to be compressed again even further. So we're going to see the next phase of the House Bill 3 tax rate compression. And that 13, the decrease from, I'm sorry, the, and we are expected to see another decrease in the 2020, 21 school year. And there's a range there. That range is there because we don't know yet what that decrease is going to look like because it's based on our property value growth. And the one thing that's different this year is that TEA is calculating our MNO tax rate for us. In the past, we have not fluctuated on our MNO rate. But because of the House Bill 3 compression, TEA will calculate the tax rate for us and let us know what the MNO rate is going to be. So it can decrease anywhere from 1.36 cent all the way up to 10.53 cents. And I've mentioned to you previously that we do anticipate we will be on that higher range in terms of the percentage decrease. So with the tax rate, it should be closer to the lower end. Next slide. The INS rate decreased last year as well, which was very impressive for us because we had not had a significant decrease in the INS rate for a while. And looking at the 2020, 2021 INS rate, it's still yet not determined what that will be because we do base that on our property values as well. And once we receive those certified values, we will determine what that rate might look like. I will share with you that right now, we don't anticipate much of a change because as a fast-growth district, we do want to try to maintain a brief, a tax, the a tax rate on the INS side that will help support our growth and give us a nice alternative in terms of our bond authorizations. But we will know more once we get our certified property values, which are anticipated to be released sometime this week or early next week. Next slide. So when you look at the total tax rate in 1920, it, we, again, we saw a huge decrease in our tax rate, 13.78 cents. And we are anticipating that for 2020, 2021 fiscal year, the MNO tax rate will decrease. Our INS tax rate, even though we haven't determined what that will look like just yet, if you, when you add those two together, we do anticipate that the total overall tax rate will decrease. Again, we are waiting to determine what that amount might be, what that will look like. But a decrease for the next fiscal year in our tax rate is definitely something that we're looking forward to. Next slide. I wanted to share with you the fund balance picture because it's come up recently. And a lot of districts are talking about fund balance due to the level of uncertainty that we have right now as a result of House Bill 3 as well as the pandemic. And one of the things that I wanted to point out is that, again, our fund balance is strong. We are in a healthy position. And over the last four years, you'll see here that our fund balance has increased by over 14 million, almost 15 million, and that represents about a 58% increase from 2015, 16 to 2018, 19. We are still projecting that for 1920, we will add about 3 million to fund balance. But again, we are still refining and looking at the 1920 budget to determine what that number will actually look like. We have about a month and a half left in the fiscal year, but our accounting does not end then. We still have some adjusting entries that we need to, to make at year end. So we'll have a better picture of what this number might look like in the coming month. Next slide. The projected 2019, 2020 general fund budget has not changed since the June presentation. We have, like I said earlier, we have a little more than a month left in the fiscal year, so we're still working on numbers. We are still looking at the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on our budget. I know there have been several questions about how much money we could possibly save or will our expenses actually go up? That is something that we are still looking at and making the, or looking at every piece or factor in the budget and making sure that we have the right information to make the determination on whether or not the COVID-19 pandemic will, what impact that would have to our bottom line. But like I said, right now, we're still looking at putting money into fund balance. There are also some spending or some decisions that need to be made about expenditures toward the end of the year. And those, as those decisions are, are made, we will adjust this number. Next slide. Also, with the 2020, 21 general fund budget, not much has changed since I last spoke to you in June. But there was one small difference, and that is that there is a slight increase in expenditures and a small decrease in revenue, which resulted from, which resulted in a, a small increase in the net change in fund balance. That increase is about 400,000. For the most part, it is due to the increase of 0.505% in the TRS contribution that the district has to put in for our employees. But again, not a significant change. And we are still working and refining those numbers. I am so excited that certified values are projected to be released soon. And once we get those certified values, we are definitely, we will definitely be in the right position to get the budget more locked in and get an accurate picture of what the 2021 estimate will be like as of the date of the certified values. And then we can make, have that budget posted in the paper for our community to see. Next slide. Like I said, certified values are scheduled to be posted or to be out by July 25th. I know July 25th is a Saturday. That's why I said I hope we have those numbers either later this week or early next week. And then, once we get those certified values, that's the next step in defining the budget or developing the budget. In August, this is a new step with TEA calculating our MNO tax rate. So the survey that we have to submit for TEA to calculate our tax rate is our property value, our certified values. So I cannot submit that survey until I get the certified values, but that is due August 1st. That's why I am assuming that we will get our certified values before that date. And then after we get our budget squared away and on August 17th, I will be standing before you, asking you to adopt the budget and approve the tax rate. Next slide. I wanted to just point out again and share with you, I don't think I can say it enough, how much uncertainty remains this year as well as next year. There are numerous questions that we have to ask ourselves in this budget development process. And my peers and my colleagues in other districts, we're, we're all experiencing the same things. We have the same questions in terms of our enrollment and attendance. What will that look like? Will students come? What will TEA fund? And just in the last month, I think I've noticed that guidance has changed about three or four times. But the good thing is, as the guidance change, changes, we change. We make the necessary adjustments to make sure that we're doing what we need to do for our kids. Also, we have to, we ask questions about the COVID-19 expenses. You know, what items do we need and what items or expenses are determined to be allowable? And that changes very frequents, frequently. And there's still a lot of uncertainty or just the inability to pin down what an allowable cost may be for each funding type. And I'm going to briefly talk about that later. And then with state aid, we still don't know how House Bill 3 is going to be implemented fully. And now with the pandemic, what will that look like with House Bill 3? And of course, the question that I think we've all asked for months is, is House Bill 3 sustainable? We asked that question before this pandemic, and now even in the midst of the pandemic, that raises that question and accents it, it underscores it. And that's the one thing that we all, I think, are anxiously trying to figure out. And you know, there are some funds available due to the pandemic, the CARES Act funding, but we don't know necessarily how that's going to complement or supplement or supplant FEMA funding or other, other funding sources. And then the question that I want to know, as well as a lot of other people, is will we receive additional funds? You know, there are conversations around additional funds being made available, but will we, will we, will districts receive that, that money or will that go to TEA? You know, there's, there's just a lot of questions and, and some items that still need to be hashed out in terms of the funding. Next slide.
Jennifer, can I clarify? Can you go back, please, real quickly, just to ask this question? So when you say on the state aid one about, are there enough funds to sustain House Bill 3? You're not talking about for the upcoming school year. You're talking about after the next legislative session. Just to be clear on that one, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Our legislature, as well as our commissioner, has, right now, they've committed to sustaining House Bill 3 through this current biennium, which ends next year.
Thank you. Mr. Taggart, you had a question?
I, I read an article this morning where I think someone from the state projects now that they're in about a $4.6 billion deficit due to the COVID collections and things. So that was definitely a worry some article when I read that, thinking about the sustainability after this next year of House Bill 3. That really had me concerned.
Yes, I saw that article and it, it is very interesting. So, you know, just additional questions. Next slide. So basically, this, this slide is saying that we have all of these expenses that are, that are due to the COVID-19 pandemic. So imagine that, that our expenses are in a funnel. So let's just say that funnel is the CARES Act, it's our state aid, it's the FEMA reimbursement. Just, let's just say, or imagine that. And then when you put all of these expenses in this funnel, there are some things that come out. And the things that come out in terms of what we've expended, you'll see that they don't equal the amount of money that we're getting back for those expenses through our funding sources. For instance, when you look at the CARES Act, the ESER, what we call ESER funding, that actually was used to reduce our state aid or offset our state aid. So, Mr. Taggart, when you read that article, I think you probably saw that it said there was this big deficit, that 4.58 billion deficit, but a portion of that, it was actually 11 million or 11 billion. But because of the CARES Act ESER funding, that's how we got to that 4.58 billion deficit. It was because TEA took the money from the CARES Act and said, okay, you get $70 million in state aid, but we're going to give you 69 million and take this other million dollars and apply that toward the ESER funding. You still get 70 million total, but now you get 69 million from the state and a million dollars from the CARES Act. So that was not additional money. That was just an offset or what we, what I've called a swapping of expenses. And then you have what is being talked about as the Coronavirus Relief Fund. That, again, has certain expenses that are allowable. But only 75% of those expenses are going to be reimbursed. So the district is going to be left holding the bag for 25% possibly. And then with FEMA, FEMA is the same thing, except FEMA funding, FEMA's funding is extremely restrictive. It's really only being used for cleaning and sanitizing efforts by the district and up to 75% reimbursement. So I wanted you to just imagine how when you take all of our expenses and you put them through that CARES Act FEMA fun, funnel, you will see that only a little bit comes out, and that little bit is what we will be reimbursed for. Because I think people may think about it and say, well, we have these expenses that's associated with the COVID-19 funding, but we're going to be reimbursed for them. So I wanted to make sure that everyone understood that the district still is responsible for a lot of those expenses. And it's not as simple as saying, we have these additional costs and we don't need to be concerned about how we're going to pay for them in the long run because we're going to get reimbursed. But that is not the case in every expense that we incur. And that concludes my presentation. Does anyone have questions?
Does the board have any questions, comments? Mr. Flor.
Yeah, I'd get just a couple. If we could roll back to 196, just the, the MNO tax rate. So you said you, we thought we were going to come in at the lower end of that spectrum, right? So the 0.963. Explain again why you think we're going to come in at the lower end of that spectrum. Can we run through that one more time?
Sure, not a problem. Because that tax rate is based on property value growth, our property value growth right now with preliminary values was over 17%. And if it's really high like that, that further compresses the tax rate or reduces the tax rate.
Gotcha.
Because you bottom, I say bottom out, there is a cap, basically, and that cap is at about, I think, about 18%. And I'd have to look up that number exactly.
Nah, that's okay. Okay, so if we, so I'm just trying to think where we could end up, right? So if you said the INS rate is likely to hold about the same, and then if we just take the conservative view on MNO, like at the top end, put the two of those together, puts us about 1.45. If we end up on the bottom end of this range, it's maybe like a 1.36. So maybe if we're not at the far end, so maybe we're like, like somewhere in the 1.38 to 1.45 range is probably what it sounds, what it sounds like you're saying, right? Clearly, we don't, we won't know till we know, right? And so I'm not locking you in to anything, but just directionally, it kind of sounds like that's where we're going. Does that, am I doing that math right?
You are. That's accurate. So if we look at that bottom end of the range, then we would be closer to that 1.36.
Right, right, okay.
For the total tax rate.
I mean, so that would be potentially pretty significant.
Yes.
To a homeowner, okay.
And, and, and Chris, I just want to point out that it is basically maintaining the same tax revenue.
Right, right, stays the same. It stays the same, right? Because everybody's value goes up, right? So it offsets, yeah. So it offsets. Yeah, I, I, yeah, I got that.
Almost a rate to maintain similar revenue.
Right, right. And then I think the only, maybe just comment, you know, on on 204, this is like the funding for COVID nineteen and expenses not equalling the funding sources, right? I mean, I think we need to go into this with a, you know, at the department level of having the attitude of budget, budget authority doesn't equal spending authority, right? Because there's, there's a lot of question marks still, right? Just just because the budget says it's this number of dollars doesn't mean it's a blank check to spend up to that number of dollars right now. Right? And and I mean, I think we all get it here, but probably just worth saying it from a public standpoint.
Thank you for making that point, but I will share with you that I have actually encouraged our budget managers to utilize their funds wisely to this year to make sure that we get the items needed for our kids because this year has been different. And we want to make sure that we are prepared for when the children do come back.
Right. It's a last one for me. So for the 2020, 2021 view, where did, where did we end up on the 2.1 million anticipated for electronic or for the technology? Right? Because I don't think that was in the budget last time. So did we, did we decide to lease that? Did we purchase it? Are we taking it in 1920? Where did we land there?
We're still looking at the lease. We're working on that. We currently have an RFP out for a leasing vendor.
Okay.
And if everything works out with the lease, we will take, we will bring that information back to you all at the August board meeting.
Okay. Okay, that's, that's all. Thank you. Thank you for all the work on this. I know this is like a moving target. You're you're changing the tire when the car's in motion. So I get it. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Thank you, Chris. Dr. Smith, did you have something else to add?
Madam President, members of the board, I want to thank Jennifer for her work on this. It is a complex issue again, and there's a lot of moving parts. But why we are presenting to you tonight is when we get to our August board meeting, we are going to be presenting to you a budget for adoption. And so over the past three months, Jennifer has had a series of presentations, hopefully to continue to provide you a status check of where we are and what our current planning is so that you're well prepared and well informed for that vote when we hit August. So if you have questions along the way, please feel free to reach out to us and let us know.
Thank you, and thank you, Jennifer, and your team for all your hard work. I see Mr. Alcozner has his hand up. Go, go ahead, Mr. Alcozner.
Jennifer, I just have a one question. You you had indicated that the district is in good shape and you mentioned the fund balance that we have five months. And then you also mentioned that there's been an increase of in 58% of the fund balance since about 2015. That increase, is that, is that a function of just, we just have more expenses, monthly expenses as the district has grown?
Yes, and what, not only has our fund balance increased, but our revenue as well as expenditures have increased as well.
Okay, and and I think I had asked you this question once before. Is the general rule in keeping about five months? Is that, is that what you try to maintain?
We try to maintain between 20 to 25% per board policy. And that is definitely more than that. But that was done intentionally because we were opening Lake Belton High School and we wanted to make sure we had enough money in the coffers to to help us transition to opening Lake Belton High School. But with House Bill three, we were fortunate enough to get enough funding to carry us through the opening of Lake Belton High School.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Manuel, I think that's a really good clarification, too, just for our board is that idea of what the what our our balance is at the end of the year and how much you've been adding over the past few years. I think it sets us up for hopefully a positive position moving forward, realizing that our local board policy says between 20 and 25%, and we far exceed that right now. I think that gives us some hope over the next few years that we will be able to sustain some of the uncertainty regarding the COVID implications. And I applaud our board in our previous administrations and Jennifer for your your thoughtful approach to budgeting, because I think what you've done has allowed us to put us in a good spot for the upcoming years.
Yeah, so Manuel, to your question on fund balance, right? I mean, I think one of the things you want to look at, too, is what is the fund balance percentage, right? So we've seen the fund balance go up here, right? But what you don't see on here is the fund balance as a percentage of your overall, like, funding, right? And so that, it doesn't go up quite nearly as dramatically like when you look at it that way. But yeah, I mean, I think to Dr. Smith's point, right? I mean, with some of the question marks around House Bill three, I think we're in a, we're we're in a good spot to to weather whatever that storm may look like.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Flor. Anyone else? Well, again, thank you, Jennifer, for that information and ensuring that we're good stewards of the district's funds. We are ready to move on to the next item where we talk about regarding the employment of administrative employees.
Madam President, members of the board, you know Todd Schiller and one of the leaders in the H R world in the state of Texas. We're excited to have Todd here tonight. One of the best things that we can do is celebrate great leaders who come to Belton I S D, and we're excited to bring a few of those leaders forward to you tonight. I'll turn it over to Todd.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we do have five administrative hires that we are recommending for your approval. And we will just jump right into them. So first of all, we have Arturo Lumeli. He is being recommended for the executive director of secondary campus leadership. Arturo received his bachelor's degree from California Polytechnic State University and his master's degree from George Fox University in Oregon. Arturo has 14 years in education. He's worked as dean of students, assistant principal and principal. Arturo comes to us from Leander I S D where he has served as a high school principal for the last five years. The next one we have is Gabby Nino. Gabby is being recommended for the executive director of elementary campus leadership. She earned her bachelor's and master's degree from Texas State University. She has 18 years in education, has served as a teacher, assistant principal, and for the last eight years, she has served as a principal in Georgetown I S D. To us from Georgia, I'm sorry, and she's also served as director of assessment and feedback. Next one, we have Sheila Sarabik. Sheila, everybody knows Sheila. Sheila is being recommended for principal of Belton Early Childhood School, Bex. Sheila's earned her bachelor's and master's degree from Charlton State University. She has 21 years in education, 20 of those years serving in early childhood positions, and she's worked with Belton I S D for six years. We have, next, we have Sarah Wendell. Sarah is being recommended for the director of special programs. She has 21 years of experience working with special programs. She's earned her bachelor's degree from Louisiana State University in communication disorders and her master's degree from Louisiana State University of Medicine and Speech Language Pathology. And the last one we have tonight is Carrie Zeppernick. And Carrie has been recommended for, is being recommended for principal of High Point Elementary. Carrie has 12 years of experience in education. She's served as an elementary teacher and as an assistant principal for the last four years in Round Rock I S D. She got received her bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies and her master's degree in educational leadership from Texas State University. And I believe some of these individuals are a part of the Zoom session tonight, anxiously awaiting your approval on these.
Well, you know, we won't make you wait for too long. So at this time, we will, the administrative recommendation is approval recommendation in addition of personnel as presented. Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Mr. Flor, is there second, Mr. Norwood? All in favor, please raise your hand. That looks like it passes unanimously. Welcome to the party, gang. We're glad you're here. It takes a powerhouse to run Belton. I'm glad you're here because we're going to do this together. You know, I'm listening to all of your credentials. I'm like, oh, yeah, all right. This is us. We're going to do this together. One big red community. You guys like to say any words at all? Anybody? Go ahead, Mr. Arturo.
I've always got something to say, so I'll jump in there. You know, it's, it's a really an honor and privilege to be part of this community and family. Everybody I've met along the way in this process has just been stellar and amazing. And so with all humility, thank you for for welcoming us here into into Belton I S D. And I can't wait to serve our community to the very best of my abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead, Ms. Sheila.
Hi, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to be the principal at Belton Early Childhood School. Early childhood is my passion, and so I just look forward to continuing to serve Belton I S D's youngest learners and just ensure that exceptional learning happens at Bex. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Y'all, I think we're all getting aggressive. I'm like, who gets to speak next? I am so thrilled to be joining the Big Red family. It is so evident y'all's commitment to exceptional experiences for kids. I got so excited hearing you, board members, expressing your desire to Dr. Smith earlier to take part in the learning experiences at campuses. And just that just made me feel so excited to be a part of this family. I cannot wait to meet you in person. I'm so thankful that you guys have committed to investing in school leadership. Our school leaders then turn things around and invest in our teachers who thrive, most importantly, so our kids have exceptional experiences. So excited. Thank you, thank you, thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Carolyn.
Hi, I am, I am just super excited to join the High Point family. It has been clear since my, one of my interviews with the community panel that they are in fact a family and mirror what the Belton I S D values are as part of being a, just a huge community and family. I look forward to creating phenomenal experiences alongside my teachers and our community for every single student at High Point. And thank you, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Sarah, would you like to a few words there?
Hi, thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm very excited to take this challenge on. I've got a great team, great people supporting me as I grow into this position, and I'm really looking forward to serving our students this year.
Well, thank all of you. We look forward to what you bring to the table. Wow. Board, do you all have anything you all would like to say? I know they're excited. I can see the excitement on their faces. Look at that, they're smiling. Again, thank you and welcome to the team. Welcome to Belton. All righty then, we'll just move on to our next item then. We're going to talk about, we're going to discuss the standards space, standards-based grading reports.
Madam President, members of the board, it's my understanding that this isn't the first time you've heard about this, that maybe you had a presentation back in the end of January, early February. And Dr. Love Smith is here tonight to talk to you about doing something great for our kids. It's really focusing on how we communicate with kids and families, what the learning really is in Belton I S D. So I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Good evening. Yes, this work began pre-COVID a long time ago when we really wanted to look and explore a better way to to provide more informative information to our parents in regard to our grading and student performance, specifically in kindergarten and first grade. And so the purpose of tonight is to inform the board just of that change since we last talked and and our final progress for implementation for the 2021 school year. So as you may recall, we, why are we moving to standard space grading? We really want to make sure that we're showing a mastery of students' levels, that we're communicating growth for our earliest learners. And so we're making that shift from a numerical grade to really showing where they're at and their progress in learning. And then we want to, we recognize, and we did a lot of work in studying Hattie and instructional practices with through our instructional rounds and effective feedback has one of the highest effect sizes. And so we really want to make sure we're we're focusing on effective feedback. So a standard grace report card is really going to show that growth. High priority, it's going to focus on high priority learning standards. It's going to focus on a student progress. More importantly, it's going to provide better information to parents so that they know exactly what their child knows, what they're able to do, and then what support they can provide their child at home. So over the course, through all of our our at-home work environments, we continue to meet with our teachers virtually. And we held meetings, as you can see, from March 3rd through June 17th to ensure that we were getting teacher feedback on the development. So they helped us in actually developing the progress, the standard and the report, but then also to develop a rubric for how we could work with our teachers to be united and consistent across the district. And so, so in your packet, you have the full rubrics or the full report cards in English and in Spanish for kindergarten and first grade. Now, we talked about pre-K. We actually were already implementing a standard report card in kindergarten and pre-K. And in talking with our new principal, Sheila Servick, and in looking at pre-K implementation and the fact that we will have, we're about to go through a new adoption for pre-K, we decided that it was best to just leave the pre-K report card as is. And then once we work through our kindergarten and first grade, we can consider future alignment. So on this slide is our kindergarten report card. It's just the top, so I can talk through a couple of things. As you can see, we identified, we have kindergarten as the grade level at the top, and then we developed a scale. So rather than a numerical grade, we'll report to a parent if their child is still developing in the standard, if they're approaching grade level, or if they've met the standard. We'll report over all four nine-week periods. We have colored in areas where that particular standard will not be assessed. Then with each standard, if you'll go to the next slide, I just gave you one standard to break down. So the first standard for the kindergarten E L A is to identify and produce rhyming words. So we have an extensive rubric that outlines, beginning in the second nine weeks, exactly what a child would need to 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 accomplish, to be at developing, approaching, or the mastery level. And we have this rubric broken down by every single standard for both grade levels, kindergarten and first grade. We tried to be really clear exactly in what's in there. We work with teachers to make sure they're understanding. And then we we recognize that this is a, this is the first year, this is our first year, and this is a huge shift to have everybody align in their in their grading practices. So we plan to continue the work with teachers, not only at the beginning of the year to explain how to use this rubric, but then also through our professional learning times as we go through our unit debriefs to make sure that that teachers understand how they're assessing. It's also important to know that students are assessed multiple times to develop, to determine that final rating. So it won't be just one time, did you, did the student master seven or more rhyming words, but throughout that nine-week period to then develop a final rating. This is a big journey for for our staff, but they are extremely excited to be implementing it. Like I said, we'll have a training in August, but then we'll have ongoing training. We will also, on our website, make sure that we provide communication to parents both ahead of time, so they'll see the entire report card and what will be assessed throughout the year, which is a first, because in the past, as you may know, if you have children in the system, you get a report card, but you don't see every single mastery or assignment for an entire year. Well, for our K and one, they will. There are also some other implications to this that I'll be bringing to first, our board policy committee at our next meeting, and that is a revision for E I A local and E I E local. Both of these policies are our grading policies. They both currently reference that our our students will receive a numerical grade. And so with this change tonight, we will be proposing changes to those policies. I plan to bring that to the next policy committee meeting with a first reading in August and then a final presentation in September. I will also note just that as we continue to refine grading practices, these may be some policies that come back to you often. We're going to start with our kindergarten and first grade, but as we move forward, these will just be in continual progress to revise. That's a lot tonight, but that's, that's our plan moving forward with standard space grading.
Okay.
Good job, Karen. I know, as
I know, as a as a parent, that would have been helpful to me with kindergartners and first graders to have that level of detail. And then also as a second-grade teacher, which is what I was, it would have also been helpful to me to be able to see that level of detail coming into my class listed out for every student that entered, at least from Belton ISD. That's been a useful.
Absolutely. So I'm a parent of, I can't believe it, but an incoming fourth grader, but I'm not that far from having a child in kindergarten and first grade. And so definitely, from a parent, I I see immense value and what this would have provided me with continuously where he was at in his learning and what I think it'll provide to our parents.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other comments? Thank you, Deanna. We don't have any action that we need to take on this particular item. That was just a report only. I would note that Dr. Montgomery is, she got disconnected, but she is connecting back. And we will continue on with our next item, which is our 2017 bond and new construction project update.
Board members, as you know, we've undergone a reorganization since Dr. Mueller has left us. And I have a gentleman, Mike Morgan, who I think might be the only gentleman on here tonight that has a suit and tie on, and he's representing us very well. But Mike is going to be leading our facilities work in Belton ISD moving forward. And so he's going to introduce Jared and our our team here tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and President McDonald and trustees. It's my pleasure to get to to present to you tonight and talk about some very exciting things and some exciting times at Belton ISD. And the first and most probably on everyone's forefront is our bond and construction update. So looking at Lake Belton High School, we were at 97% complete through June. Application for pavement, we are almost at the finish line. We completely expect to have our certificate of occupancy from Temple later this week. Furniture has, for the most part, been delivered and installed throughout the building. We actually were able to have a couple of student groups on campus today for outdoor activities. They're not allowed inside yet, but we did have some outside activities going on today as allowed. And in August, we fully anticipate being able to ask for the board's approval for substantial completion. So that's a, that is a very exciting things going on to a 26-month project. Also, for our Belton High Orchestra Edition, we're 86% through through the June application for payment. The contractor is completing the last items for the scope of work and looking for a punch list in the next one to two weeks. And once again, like with Lake Belton High School, we fully anticipate in August to be able to ask for the board's approval for substantial completion. So we're very pleased to to kind of give that brief update. And I'll now turn it over to Jared, and he will, he will take us through some more specific items as presented from our architects.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. So as you'll go to the next slide, we'll start the introduction of projects and go one more. And as he mentioned, it is beyond an exciting time of whether it's been 26 months of construction, add in maybe another year, year and a half of planning, it's been a long road coming. And really excited to see both Lake Belton High School and the Belton High School Orchestra Edition, which are really giving, is really giving a new face to the campus. Those are drawing to a close. So you saw these photographs last month for Lake Belton High School. And then if you go to the next slide, I think really your tour of the school really gave the board a glimpse of what's coming here from the facility. So here you see the main entrances to the school, the main entrance there on the right with the CTE entrance on the top left. And then the bottom, the library view is really the student entrance from the bus drop-off near the CTE and really formulates that courtyard. So it's really coming together, grass landscaping is getting installed, providing those finishing touches here. And then as Coach Morgan noted, certificate occupancy we're anticipating this week, which is a huge deal with City of Temple. It means we could officially occupy the building with respect to the city. So in time for everybody to get going and students to arrive here shortly. So if you go to the next slide, here you see some of the classroom spaces. Not only are we finishing the building with Bartlett Cock and going through the punch list items, we've actually punched the entire building with the exception of the auditorium, which means that we've generated the architect's list of here's all the things that need to be completed to finish it out. And slowly Bartlett Cock has been cleaning those up, and we should be working through the rest of the auditorium here pretty soon as well. So then these learning spaces, you'll see finished product here with the furniture range. You even see CTE classroom there with a Annie doll to be able to practice some resuscitation. So get that hands-on experience for the contractor as well as our students here hopefully soon. And then if you go to the next slide, you'll see then the core learning environments. And again, this is that flexible creative space, the one-on-one, the group, small group instruction, all the way into the classroom space. And I know that they're working on technology in the background, not only having here, you see projectors in place, but getting that connected to the Belton network and have that up and running for students. If you go to the next slide, here, this is our our common area. So not only are we getting the furniture installed, we're getting the graphics installed. So if you recall, we have our four neighborhoods. So you'll see some of that custom imagery there celebrating the historic parts of Belton and Temple and the line and rail along the way. Dining Commons is that last little link that's coming together. They are finishing the changes there at the entrance when we made the modifications to the secure entry vestibule. So that is coming along. The casework there is the only modification that's going to take a little bit longer for them to round out on the, that'll arrive in August. And then there you see the auditorium in the bottom right. If we go to the next slide, then of course, not only inside the building, but outside the building is really finished, our athletics areas from tennis, baseball, football, and then as well as the weight room is starting to fill out. So we're really excited to see this one really finish up at this point. And then the final slide for Lake Belton, which is, there's no changes to report to the district at this time. So really honing in on that 106 million, there will be savings given back to the district. So we're excited about that and be able to look towards the future. Any questions on Lake Belton High School? All right, then we'll move over to Belton Orchestra. And if you'll go one more here, this one likewise, you see a long history of the project. We were just about finished last time. The contractor was wrapping it up, and there were a few items that they were waiting until July to receive, like some of the casework, those type of elements. So if you'll go to the next sheet or next page, thank you. You'll see that the spaces are really finished out from the band hall and the practice rooms, not only on the orchestra side, which is the addition, but also on the band hall side. So we're looking at punching that project here this week and attaining substantial completion pretty quickly thereafter and have the contractor address the items from there. Here we'll work for certificate of occupancy as well with the city, but see no issues in wrapping this one up here in the next couple of weeks. And I believe that's the last slide. With that, we we thank you and excited to see students come here.
Thank you, Jared. Anybody else have any, Mr. Dr. Smith, do you have questions or comments?
I just want to thank Jared and our partnership with O'Connell Robertson and with Bartlett Cock. We're thankful for their work in all of this. That is a magnificent facility for our kids. And their work is has been, and their partnership has been noted along with the work of Mike and all of our internal team. So thank you to them.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Mike, did you have something else?
No, ma'am.
Awesome. Okay, that was that we'll move on to our next item, where we're talking about ranking of proposals in connection with the elementary school playground improvements.
I'm going to turn it right back over to Mr. Morgan again in the facilities world.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you once again. Just a brief, a brief review that back in February, Jared Starzinger from O'Connell Robertson spoke with our facilities committee. And in that meeting, they talked about options, priorities, and pricing for elementary playground improvements. This is kind of the second phase of the original elementary improvements that we made over a year ago that was mainly in regards to sidewalking and ADA compliance at our at our playgrounds. The proposal was then brought to the April board meeting. Sealed bid was approved as the delivery method for the project. And the estimated cost for the project upgrade to the elementary playgrounds was estimated at $2.1 million. Items that were to be included in the project were, among others, swings, additional swings, new swings in some cases, play structures, fault protection, and canopy shades. So what what did we want to accomplish? What was the goal? The goal was to have highly functional elementary playgrounds that would meet the needs of each and every student at each and every campus. The the goal was to create equity among all elementary campuses based on the size of the schools, existing equipment, and what was needed to achieve this. So to realize this, we had to understand not all, not all campuses were at the same point in their playgrounds. Some some had canopies, shaded canopies, some did not. Some had one, some had two. Some had adequate swings for their for their capacity of population. Some did not have it. So as you look at the, what actually was ended up being approved, we wanted to get to a position where we had equitable playgrounds to meet the needs based on the enrollment at our different campuses. Three qualifying bids were evaluated by Belton ISD team of administrators and and facilities. And a recommendation is brought to you tonight, and that recommendation is to award the bid to G2 Construction Services Incorporated. The total cost submitted for approval is $2,021,700, which comes in well under the $2.1 million estimate approved in April. And at this time, I would, we would be open for any questions or discussion or any action that could be taken on this item.
Board, do you have any questions? I do not. The recommendation, as stated before, is to approve the expenditure and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute a contract with GT Construction Services. Is there a motion to approve? Mr. Taggart says second by Mr. Norwood. All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
Madam President and members of the board, I think our last item of the night is again, Mr. Morgan, and he's going to update you on our extracurricular random drug testing program.
Thank you, Dr. Smith, and thanks once again, President McDonald and board of trustees. And thank you for the the upgrades to our playgrounds. That's going to be really fun to get to see our kids enjoy those for years to come at all of our elementary and and early childhood campuses. So extracurricular random drug testing program, next slide. We have talked about, we met as a as a policy committee, and we've had two separate discussions on extracurricular random drug testing. And and some of that was policy-related, some of that was program execution-related. But I was asked that this would probably be a great topic to bring to you and make sure that all of our trustees are kind of updated on the history of the program, the purpose of the program, and the rationale for testing and the consequences for positive test results. So that's my purpose for discussion with you here tonight. We do have extracurricular drug testing program. We have been doing this for quite a while with a with a couple of minor exceptions or one major exception that I'll that I'll get to in a little while. Our current procedures were established prior to 2008. What BISD currently executes is a drug testing extracurricular random program for all students in grades nine through 12 who participate in extracurricular activities, all extracurricular activities that are offered by Belton Independent School District. Student and parents do sign a consent form prior to participation. Students are also mandated to have an orientation presentation by their director, coach, or sponsor prior to participation in the program. And then we do offer parents the opportunity to to participate or to attend an orientation presentation as well. We want to be extremely clear about, as we go through the the policy, we want to be extremely clear about two things. Number one is that samples are collected from participants chosen randomly by the testing agency. No one associated with Belton ISD chooses the participants or the students who will be chosen or who will be selected for testing each month. And secondly, is the testing agency is the what is the is the body that comes in and administers the tests. We have administrators administrators that oversee the process and make sure logistically that the kids are where they're supposed to be. Kids get back to where they're supposed to be when the testing is done. But the testing agents from the from the company that we use to do our testing actually administers the tests. Next slide, please. A slight background on the actual, the functionality and the author, the authority given to us to test. So random drug testing is authorized by Board Policy FNF Local. And prior to April 2019, FNF Local was actually the source or the home for the act, for the drug testing, the specifics of the drug testing policy, meaning the execution of the policy was also defined in FNF Local along with the authority for the school to do so. With the recommendation of our legal counsel and of Tasby, we removed the actual execution of the policy from FNF Local in April 2019. And as we looked for the home of the the execution or the the program phase, we looked at a couple of options, and we decided that as policy defines the purpose and prescribes in general terms, the the ability to carry out a duty, the administrative regulation is the best place to define how a policy is executed. So with that and with the work and the the great work with our policy committee, we decided that the best home for our random extracurricular drug testing program would be in a document called FNF Regulation. And to our knowledge, this is BISD's first regulation, but it is a, it's not a part of official board policy, but it is something that the board has given us authority to do in FNF Local. Next slide. So why is testing important? And and we really, in the FNF Regulation, we try to establish in very clear terms to our parents and to our students why we think testing is important. Number one, it serves as a deterrent to the use of alcohol, nicotine, and illegal drugs amongst students. We think it offers students a vehicle by which to resist peer pressure regarding the use of alcohol, nicotine, and illegal drugs. We believe it provides a source of support and assistance to students trying to avoid the use of alcohol, nicotine, and illegal drugs. We think it teaches students self-responsibility for one's decisions and actions, and we believe it ensures the health and safety of students who might represent our schools in extracurricular activities. I want to also make it clear, in no way is this a gotcha policy. The goal of this policy is to give kids a reason to say no, because they know if they've chosen to participate in extracurricular activities, then they will be a part of our random pool and that they could be selected for testing at any time. Next slide. So what do we test for? As as commonly called drug testing, we do test for the all the common controlled substances. And there's a list there that includes the, as it says in policy, these are the most common items that we test for, but not limited to. We do test for alcohol as part of our random drug testing program. And new for 2020-21, and and we're very excited about this because I think it's going to be a benefit to our students as we are going to test for codeine, which is the component produced by the body in reaction with nicotine. So what is codeine? Codeine is a product formed after the chemical nicotine enters the body. Nicotine is a chemical found in all tobacco products, including cigarettes, e-cigarettes, and smokeless tobacco. And codeine is measure, or measuring codeines in a person's blood is the most reliable way to determine exposure to nicotine. Next slide. So why test for codeine? This is new for us, and it's relatively new statewide for most school districts. Starting last August, there were, there was a handful of districts in the state who began codeine testing as part of their random drug testing program. That number of schools expanded immensely throughout the year and is expanding even more going into this school year. And from the school districts that we've talked to, the school districts we've studied and the policies we've looked at, the the experience has been positive so far, and they do feel like it's acting as a deterrent for their students. So why codeine? Why are we concerned? Nicotine is highly addictive, as we all know. Nicotine's adverse effects on health, the nicotine's adverse effect on health is indisputable. Vaping nicotine is illegal in all forms for users under 21 years of age unless they're in an active military assignment. Vaping use has become rampant and is the most accessible form of nicotine for teenagers. Some vaping products can contain controlled substances that carry more serious consequences than just a nicotine offense. And we'd like, number, first and foremost, we'd like to give kids a reason to say no. We would like to give kids a reason to abstain. Next slide. So let's talk about drugs and alcohol first. These are the same, basically the same policy that we've that we've looked at for the past several years. These are the same, basically the same policy that we, that we've looked at for the past several years. We do feel that they've been effective as a deterrent. We do feel like they've been a positive form of peer pressure for students that value extracurriculars and know that they might be tested. For a first offense, drug or alcohol, we're going to have a conference. The, the, the assistant principal at that campus that's in charge of the, the program, the sponsor or coach, the parent and the student are all going to sit down and they're going to talk about the, what potentially could be a problem or they're at least going to talk about the failed, the failed test. That student is going to be suspended from extracurricular competition for 30 days. They'll still be allowed to, to be in the athletic period or the fine arts period or the extracurricular period. They'll still be able to practice and work out with their team, but they will not be able to compete for, for a period of 30 days. They will be providing mandatory tests during all testing opportunities for the next three months. And they will, will be required to attend some type of drug or alcohol counseling and provide documentation back to the, back to the, the administrator in charge of the program before they will be allowed to, to resume activities competitively. If a student has a second offense, then once again, there's going to be a conference between the student, his or her parents, the campus administrator and the sponsor or coach. The suspension at this point will be for the remainder of the, of the current school year. This, that student would be responsible for testing for the next six months, any testing dates we have during that six month period. And once again, the, the student would be required to go attend counseling. For a third offense, we're once again going to have a, a, a conference with the parent and the student. At that point, the student would be removed from extracurricular activities at Belton ISD and would not be required for any, any longer to serve in mandatory tests or perform additional counseling. I will say with almost certainty, because of my involvement in the athletic program before, we have very, very rarely ever gotten to a point where a student had a third offense under this program. So it is, it is very, very rare and we would really want to do everything we could to get a student help if that, if that opportunity does, does come about. Next slide, please. So codeine, with codeine testing being new to our program.
Mike, just a moment. I saw Janet had a quick question.
I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding when you say suspension on that last slide, that suspension from extracurricular activities, not school?
Not school, no ma'am. Just from, just from extracurricular activities. And that's an excellent question and one that we spent a considerable amount of time talking about in the, in the policy committee is that these are, since this is a deterrent program and not a gotcha program, and it is not part of the code of conduct, these are, these are simply consequences that are enforced within the extracurricular program. They are not consequences that are enforced through disciplinary actions. So there would never be a loss of grade associated with the failure of a drug or alcohol suspension. There would never be a, there would never be a item that would go in a student's permanent disciplinary record. This would not be something that would stay in the student's permanent full, uh, permanent record and would not travel with the student if they were to move or to attend a different school. So these are simply consequences that are enforced within the extracurricular, extracurricular program that the student participates in, but are not code of conduct or student handbook violations that would require disciplinary actions like suspension from school, ISS, DAEP, or any of those types of actions.
So if the student were then caught in the bathroom and had nothing to do with random drug testing and then tested, that would be a totally different story, right?
If a student was caught in the bathroom, that would be a handbook violation and that student would face the consequences based in our, based in our student handbook. If, if the, the, the thing about the random testing is we're not certain where, you know, we don't investigate where the consumption might have occurred. We just base the consequences based on the fact that they presented a sample and that sample tested positive for one of the items that we test for.
One, one more thing. And so this is, is this different than what we were doing before in regard to consequences?
That, that for drugs and alcohol, it's identical to what we've been doing for at least the last 13 years or so.
Coach Morgan?
Yes, sir.
Along the same lines, you know, with Janet's question, when we discussed it in the policy committee, I think, I think it's summarized by simply stating that the, the code of conduct is any state law violation would supersede the regulation. So the regulation just goes out the door if somebody commits a code of conduct violation or some sort of state law violation.
Yes, sir. And any type of possession of a controlled substance or alcohol on campus, any type of possession of nicotine on campus would, or use at, at any type of a school event would carry handbook and code of conduct consequences. And the severity of which would be based on what the, what the, the offense was.
Right. And, and you also indicated that this is something that's maintained private. But if a kid, if a kid transfers from, from this school to another school and they want to participate in athletics, then generally speaking, the UIL requires a form to be filled out and that question is asked at that time if you've had any drug issues. Is that right?
Well, it's, it's, it's in a little more general terms, but if a student transfers to another Texas public school or any public school really, or to a TAPS school, a private school, there will be questions on that transfer form that will say, was the student ever suspended from athletics at his previous school? Would the student have been prohibited for participation at his previous school and those types of questions? So while we would not, based on the, the confidentiality of our program, we would not release those results to any outside entity. We would be able to tell that other school that that student had been suspended, prohibited or removed from extracurricular activities while they were in our school. Generally then, it would be up to the new school to investigate that with the student, his parents, and maybe a call to the, to the coach or the director from the previous school, just to find out what was going on. And our, our answer to that would typically be student was removed from whatever program it was they were removed from for a violation of program rules or a violation of team rules. Next slide, please. Okay. So consequences for codeine testing, just like if a teenager is, is out in public and gets caught with a can of snuff or a pack of cigarettes, the consequences don't necessarily match the punishment that he would receive if he was caught with, with alcohol or narcotic. Our codeine consequences are not going to be as severe because we, like I spoke earlier, why codeine? Why now? We do think it's, it's a big problem for some of our students and we want to give those students a reason to say no. So we're going to take a little more of a restorative plan with students that test positive for codeine. And, and it's going to be heavy on the restorative, light on the punitive. So if we do have a first offense for codeine test, we will bring that student, his parents, the coach and sponsor and administrator in and have a conference and talk about the issue. We will assign that student 10 hours of community service to a pre-approved nonprofit organization. And that student will have 30 days in which to perform those 10 hours of community service to be able to stay. There will not be a suspension with the first offense. There will just be a, a community service element and a conference element where we all get on the same page that a student made a mistake and, and we're going to ask him, him or her to do 10 hours of community service to, as a consequence. If a student has a second offense for codeine, a codeine positive, then we're going to require that student to do 20 hours of community service within 45 days. We are going to give that student a mandatory placement in a nicotine awareness program that will have to be completed before that student within, within that 40, same 45 day period. And then we're going to, we're going to expect that student to be part of our, our, our mandatory test for the following three months. So any test that we do within the next three months, that student will be tested, but we're not going to suspend that student at this point. If we have a third offense or, or for any subsequent offenses, it's, it's worded a little bit differently than the, than the drug and alcohol, then we are going to expect that student, basically the formula from here on out is 10 additional hours. So a, a student on a subsequent offense, so the third offense would do 30 hours of community service, would also go through a nicotine awareness program and would be tested every time we test for the next six months of testing and would receive a seven day suspension for that offense. So once again, we're, we're in the infancy of this testing. We really, really want it to be a deterrent. And we want it to be, have a heavy, heavy educational and a heavy community service component and, and try to, try to take this, this away from our kids as, as, you know, they know that there's consequences now if they do get caught with nicotine use. So I would entertain any questions at this time. We just, we felt like it would be a really good review for you guys to know what's going on. We really feel like this has been a positive program for our students. It's something that, that our coaches can, can say, you know, look, if you're going to be part of our programs, you know, you could be tested at any time because of the randomness of, of it. Sometimes there are students who get tested several times during a year and sometimes students don't get tested at all. Just to kind of give you the ballpark numbers of what we, what we were dealing with. We had over 1,600 students at Belton High School last year that were involved in extracurricular activities, which is a very, very substantial number. So lots of participation in the program. Lots of kids from all avenues of, of athletics, fine arts, academics, CTE, ROTC and Ag and lots of other programs involved. So we, we feel like it's a positive. It gives our kids hopefully a reason to say no, and at the very least, an opportunity for them to understand that there's consequences for your actions. But our, once again, our, our, this is not a gotcha policy. It's upfront. The policy is on the website for anyone to see what we're trying to accomplish and what the consequences are. And our goal each and every year is to have zero positive results.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate that. Janet had a question.
And, and so, I mean, I love, I love that. I think, I think that's all very good stuff. And I love that it's transparent and that kids and, and, and families are going to know the details ahead of time. My curiosity is in regard to those student handbook issues for all general students for all times. How much, how much warning and training do these kids get in just what, what are the consequences for using an illegal substance period and it's, you know, and you get, you do get caught or, or, you know, vaping in the bathroom or, you know, whatever it is. Do they, do kids really get trained beginning of the year or when they enter into BISD? What really the consequences are because, you know, they're, they're pretty strong. They're pretty severe. And I, and just as board members, I think we can all speak for how heartbreaking it is, you know, to see kids like they messed up and now they got to pay the consequence and that's hard for everybody. So I just want to make sure that we're training all kids on what consequences are regardless of whether it's random drug testing, sports. I just want to know that they know what the handbook says.
That's, that's a fantastic question and point and something that I will, I will see what we've done. And if we haven't done enough, we need to do more and I'll, I'll look at that and I'll get back to y'all in a Friday report kind of on what our plan is to get that information out. I know that we do have the, the handbooks available. Everyone has to do, has to sign a form that they've received it, but you will, you know, as well as I, we've all had kids. I don't know that everyone is sitting down and reading the handbook cover to cover prior to things happening. So yeah, definitely we will look into that and I'll get with, with our teams and see what we can do to make sure that our students are as informed as they can be before they make those decisions. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Janet. Anybody else have any comments or? Nope. Okay. We're not going to take any action. That was just a report only. Thank you, Mike Morgan, for that. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, the board requests for new information and our reports. I know that Dr. Montgomery brought up the emergent tree data update, a possible workshop. Does anybody else have anything they'd like to, Mr. Taggart?
In the last few days, Belton ISD lost one of our former superheroes in our district, James Burrell passed away. And I would like to just mention that he was a pioneer in a lot of ways in our district. He served special needs kids. He drove a bus for 50 plus years. I'd like to maybe look at the future of officially being able to recognize him and his legacy to our district and his memory. If that's possible, I don't know if this is the right time to ask for that, but I think 50 years of service to a district and, and what he meant to us in so many different levels and so many different ways. I think he was a teacher at Harris a long time ago. I think he broke some barriers in our district. I'd like to look into maybe honoring him in an official way, if that's possible.
We will gladly. Yeah, we will gladly dive into that and provide you all with some additional information. Thank you for bringing that up. Obviously I'm new to the community, but based on what I've heard today, he was an extraordinary man that did great things for the community and our students. And so we will gladly bring you some more information on that.
Thank you. And I will show you, share with you from my personal standpoint that he actually joined a Zoom call yesterday morning for Sunday school and passed away later on in the day. So true hero right to the very end. Our calendar of events, Wednesday, the 22nd, facilities committee meeting at four. August 3rd, there is a policy committee meeting at five. And then on August the 17th, it'll be our next regular board meeting with the hope that we're on site somewhere and we'll notify everyone where that is in time. Possibly at PFAC, but they'll work out the logistics and get back with us. Does anybody else have anything else? Awesome. But thank you all for such a great meeting and I look forward to seeing and speaking with you all the next time. It is 8:06 and we are adjourned.